Life is a process, no matter how you go about it. Masi Oketukunkere, Omale Chamoke, the Biafran Republic Government Exeter Finance Minister, is humbly campaigning for global Biafran financial support for the purpose of Finland Convention, Biafran Defence Forces and redeclaration-related activities. I appreciate all Biafrans who have been supporting our liberation movement. I also urge everyone to massively support more than ever, especially in these critical times. Oh my fellow lovely great Biafrans, let's come together and support our Prime Minister Masi Simoni Ba, who is currently working tirelessly to hand over our freedom to us this year 2024. There is no magic to progress and success in life. Life gives back what you give to it. It takes a man who believes in himself to create wealth. So keep working hard and never lose hope in what you believe in. I want to use this special opportunity to recognize great team Odmegu Joku. I can't also forget General Philip Effiong. A big shout out to Masi Oketukunkere, I salute you my peer, Masi Simoni Ba. Life is sweet when you're patient. The greatest shout out goes to the media team in Twit Talent, De Wono. Life is a process, no matter how you go about it. Masi Oketukunkere, Omale Chamoke, the Biafran Republic Government Exeter Finance Minister, is humbly campaigning for global Biafran financial support for the purpose of Finland Convention, Biafran Defence Forces and redeclaration-related activities. I appreciate all Biafrans who have been supporting our liberation movement. I also urge everyone to massively support more than ever, especially in these critical times. Oh my fellow lovely great Biafrans, let's come together and support our Prime Minister Masi Simoni Ba, who is currently working tirelessly to hand over our freedom to us this year 2024. Masi Oketukunkere, salute every Biafran specially. There is no magic to progress and success in life. Life gives back what you give to it. It takes a man who believes in himself to create wealth. So keep working hard and never lose hope in what you believe in. I want to use this special opportunity to recognize great team Odmegu Joku. I can't also forget General Philip Effiong.
And all the rising sun we love and cherish. We love and hold and all our brave heroes. We must defend our lives or we shall perish. We shall protect our hearts from all our faults. But if the price is that for all we all give, then let us die without a shred of fear. Hail to be a consecrated nation. Oh Fatherland, this be our solemn pledge. Defending thee shall be our dedication. Spilling our blood will count our privilege. The women's land that rich and bold and so free shall always be a land of liberty. We shall emerge triumphant from this ordeal. And through the crucible unscathed will pass. When we are boys, the wounds of past shall heal. We shall remember those who guide the mast. Then shall our children feel the glorious song of victory with God almighty. Oh God, protect us from the hill pit fort. Guide all our movements lest we go astray. Give us the strength to hear the humanist call. To give a nod to calm the colty chain. Let's all rule to start with resoluteness. To make this land a land of righteousness.
All hail Beowfra, land of the rising sun. We love and cherish. We have vanquished all enemies. All hail Beowfra. God bless Beowfra. In him we trust. Shout it, sing it. All hail Beowfra. God bless Beowfra. We have emerged triumphant from all our faults. Through the crucible unscathed we passed victorious. Our trumpets pealing the glorious song. Play it, sing it. All hail Beowfra. All hail Beowfra. We shall always remember all that perished. In the struggle for our freedom, all hail our heroes. Our prayer shall be born both day and night. Save them always. All hail Beowfra. All hail Beowfra. Now our star shines everywhere. We crave humility. God guide and protect us all. All hail your wisdom shielding us from glory. Unleashed by your light and bent, Beowfra, Beowfra shining forever.
As long as we come on air every evening, the whole world must listen. As long as we preach this very gospel, Chuku Okike Abiyama must be with us. Therefore, without any further hesitation, we must proceed to offer every prayer to Chuku Okike Abiyama who decided in heaven. Therefore, as we always commence, not from today but from of old. not from today but from of old. Our Father who art in heaven, nanyinkebe ne lige, kahageden song, that your name may be hallowed by men, that we may bow at the mention of it, that we may offer every glory unto thee, that we may offer you every adoration and adulation, because there is none like thee. You fight our battles for us. Every blessed day you demonstrate through your kindness and your everlasting mercy that you are our Lord, our God and our Creator. This evening we offer these your children unto thee all over this very planet that you created. They are listening across the entire 24 time zones on this very planet where they inhabit. They are listening to your gospel this very evening. This gospel of redemption, a gospel of hope, a gospel of restoration, a gospel of renewal. This very gospel of freedom, this very gospel of emancipation as only you ordain. Only pray meaning that this very gospel was preached that mankind may be set free from the eternal damnation of the creation of the British. My goodness me, I want to remain in the spirit because we must worship heaven. We answer your name, oh Lord of hosts. Everything about us is designed to offer glory unto thee. We have atoned for our sins last year. This very year we have not only atoned for our sins, we have spilled, we have shed blood. They have shed our blood. We have let our sacrifice be made unto thee. Even on the 30th of August, as we are being felled by the bullets of the enemy, by the workers of iniquity and of darkness, we remain very strong today to beckon upon thee, to ask you for your mercy and for your grace, to ensure that your kingdom is restored upon the face of the earth, that you can bring your healing hand to bear upon the life of those of them that you created for one singular purpose and that purpose alone which is to worship you in truth and in every honesty. Is there any way that we have heard? Is there any way that our ancestors may have sinned? We confess before a congregation of the whole of humanity to ask you, oh Lord of hosts, to have mercy upon us. Becomeranya boletineke nanonige, you must have mercy upon us. We have suffered enough. We have been subjugated enough. We have been tortured enough. We have been imprisoned enough. We did not do these people anything. Our only crime is to answer your name. Our only crime is to be born your children. Our only crime is to excel at everything that we place our hands into. Our only crime is to exhibit your glory and your blessing which manifestedly is upon our lives every blessed day. That is why they want to kill us. That is why the British want to join those of them who don't know you, to destroy your creation and your inheritance. You will not allow shame to befall your name. You will not allow the enemies to triumph over the lives of your children because you created us to exist, to worship, to honor and to praise you. That is exactly what we are going to do when this Biafra comes. It will come in truth and in every honesty because we remain every blessed day. Chukuku Abiyama believe go whiter than white and whiter than snow. Oh, wo zanyi si meheli tineke. Is there any way that we have sinned that you cannot forgive us, our trespasses, to enable us to fulfill your own word which was spoken thousands of years ago that instead of what you promised not to come to pass, that heaven and earth will cease to exist? You opened your mouth, Chukuku Okike Abiyama, to bless mankind to the coming of Yahweheshua who came here and said, "Let your kingdom come on earth as it is in heaven." Those words can never be in vain because they are anchored upon your holiness and your magnificence. That is why in the end we know that Biafra will come, that these children that we have given birth to all over the world and their children and their children and their children as long as they give birth to them and they are Biafrans, Chukuku Okike Abiyama, hagefegofufefe, they will worship you in truth and honesty. Through this very work we are doing, mankind will come to understand you. Let your miracle be wrought in our lives. Let us witness and behold your magnificence, your holiness, your mystery and your grace under our command. Oh Lord of hosts, we call upon you. We call upon you to heal. We call upon you to provide succor to those of them who are inconsolable. We ask you to come and strengthen those who are weak. We ask you to restore hope where there is hopelessness. We ask you for inclusion where there is destitution. We ask you for one brotherhood, one camaraderie, one bone, one blood and one flesh of your children, the Ephesus and the Bibles, the Ison, the Shakiri, the Isobos and also those of them from Isoko. We are traveling all the way to the lands of Igala. We are moving on from there to Idoma, to Igadu, to the territories of the Igbo land. All these places we dedicate unto thee. All these lands of yours, we ask you to cover it with your mercy because Biafra will come and when it does, Chukuku Okike Abiyama, nige fegofufenoso puliche, we will dance on these streets. I'm telling you, by the time that we are done, humanity will think that we are mad, we are drunk in your glory and rightfully so because your kingdom will come to rest upon this very earth. That very kingdom is the unadulterated, non-negotiable sovereignty of the Republic of Biafra that your will may be fulfilled in our time. All these we pray, all these we ask for in no other name apart from that name that belongs to you. Ahadensosinepigepe, wonepigepe. He say, he say, he say. My name is Namdekanu. I am the leader of indigenous people of Biafra all over this very planet, I tell you.
Yes, we are coming out. Yes, it's like Ekom Admin is having a network challenge. But Ekom Admin, are you back? If you're back, over to you. Oh, that's good on.
This life is meaningless without free, real freedom. Biafra, African man. Freedom, Igbo nation. Biafra, oh. Rise up like the rising sun, Nigeria. Nigeria, the fight is for referendum. Let them go, referendum. Now is African man, freedom. Nigeria, own boy ruling my lord, my lord. Your uncle, my elder, I did not jump. Igbo man does not run. Real man no jump, baby. Why you prosecute me, my lord? Why persecute an innocent mind, my lord? There is God, oh yes, there is. The whole world is watching. I did not jump, baby. Yes, I did not jump, baby. Jump, baby, jump, baby. They came to my house and killed me, took me like Lakers. They keep all against me. They keep all against me. Like your army came to kill me. They just to see me dead. Oh, I saw, I saw. I saw you say, defender. Defender, I did not jump, baby. Stand tall, stand firm. Defend myself, Nigeria, Obe, Obe. I did not jump, baby. They came to kill all. Extra rendition, extra rendition. I did not jump, baby. I did not jump, baby.
Ekom Admin. You see how natural problems. Ekom Admin. A very wonderful story from here. This is because the system I'm using here keep telling me that I have been muted from there. So I'm not able to unmute myself. That's why all.
Okay, sir. Thank you for. I say, God of our ancestors.
Adumegu Odjuko, at the very last head of states of the deformed Republic of Biafra, a person of a general Philip Ethion of blessed memory. Now, we the people of the East, we want to also acknowledge the very effort of our supreme leader, who is where he is today and just because of this very cause. We will also acknowledge our prime minister, who also is where he is just for our sake, I swear. We will acknowledge our table acting prime minister, the people of the East cherish you. Your Excellency, the very first time you are here with your entourage. You were here before your Excellency visit us states by states. Your visits to our respective states. Honestly speaking, tremendous results. Since ascension of office and the acting president of Brigi. The issue of region came into our system. Though this region was met with resistance for some quotas of those people who actually do not mean well for us. Your Excellency today, the region who brought into what we are doing has brought about the unity we are enjoying as a region. It are several today that will have never been identified. I like the living example of what we are saying here. Your Excellency, the unity we are enjoying as a region is because of this regional system. We count it all on some of the numerous achievements of your administration. Your excellency. Our A P A. Your excellency. As a region, we look back to where you resume office. Even though. It appeared that. You have been the most criticized. Even though it appears that. You have been the most attacked. Even though it appeared that you have been the most hated. Among the palest men of the East. But your excellency, sir. We have been honored at this moment. When we say. You have achieved more than we have ever expected. Your excellency, our A P three has. So minutes back. The intention of our enemy is to jump. Breaking from Kenya and go back home. They go to the then D O S compromise. They go to the then Eastern European network disaster. Allies. We lost a lot of personnel. Either the bullets or the arrests. The movement was then at a point of total collapse. Behold, our prime minister surfaced from nowhere. Who saved the struggle. To the point. Where our enemy showed again. Collided. With a finished authority. To determine where he is. And the same intention of our enemy. Came up again because. They intended to collapse Brigi. From the formation of Brigi. It has been the nightmare of our enemy. And they intend it. To collapse Brigi from the foundations. They intended to make sure that Brigi cease to exist totally. But glory be to Chukwukika Biama. Who prompted your emergence. As our A P M today. And we are telling you, sir. That upholding Brigi. Is the greatest of all achievements you have recorded within a space of one year. To our enemy. One year was enough. To have collapsed the entire system. But to us, it is an achievement on your side. Because on the one year. Our enemy met a rock in your personality. Who gave no chance for Brigi to collapse. I'm sorry, I think. They have lost his gadget again. We should go, we should go to. Item number two.
I didn't hear anything, didn't hear anything for the past three or four minutes before this comment. I don't know if it's from my head. Everybody.
And also Cohosa C O A, C O A is here. C O A, Coho C O A. It is the one that is going to. To attend that. Number three. Okay, number, number four is the one. Number four is the one.
Yeah, good evening to everyone. All Biafrans of goodwill and good conscience. Particularly those. Who are showing. All concerns. And making all efforts. To ensure the restoration. Of our dear nation. The kingdom of God on earth. Biafra land. It is my pleasure. To. Present a brief. History. About not just. The eastern region. But the entire region of Biafra land. So beyond. Beyond. The eastern region. We will uncover. Certain things that Biafrans need to know. Because. Didn't just start this whole thing. We planned it. And here is where we are today. So. I want to. Let Biafrans know today. That the Biafra de facto government is clearly stating. That the forty states of Biafra Confederation. Were already created. And existing. So focus on the regions. Not on the states. More so, the Biafra de facto government did not create. Or amend the forty states. But only partitioned them into five great confederating regions. Following necessary factors. Not natural factors. The necessary factors are about basic. Issues that unify all Biafrans. Moves the arrangement of Biafra structure. And fast track. The Biafra liberation without destruction. Without stagnation or retrogression. The natural factors are about language, culture, resources, and etcetera. Which are secondary issues. And capable of dividing and distracting the people. Or delaying the process of the region creation and Biafra liberation. More so, the Biafra de facto government followed the factor. Order and policy of equal national representation. To partition the forty states into five confederating. And geographical regions. Which are subject to future improvement or amendment. The creation of regions are part of standard. Completion and readiness of Biafra structural arrangements for independence qualification. And recognition by other countries. The five regions have timely come. Same way the forty states came by necessity. And as part of Biafra restoration template. The five regions announced by Biafra de facto government, namely northern. Region, southern region, eastern region, which is hosting us today. Western region and central region becomes henceforth. The proper and official confederating and geographical identity and expression in the Biafra Confederation. The hinterland, coastal land. And the other ways being expressed before now as regions are mere descriptive expressions. Not proper and official expression. Considering the current situation of division, conflict, misdirection and sabotage in the Biafra struggle. Caused by the agent of subtlety and deception, Ngazi Oraabueze. The Biafra de facto government carefully appointed. And authorized only twelve man committee. Mostly administrators. Who looked into the partitioning of the already existing forty states into five regions through summit. The committee members are administrators of. Enugu state. Omambala state. Itai Anang state. Icamba state. Iwani state. Akapik Oro state. Alanso state. Olu state, Ebony state. Minister of Interior. Secretary of State. And Chairman of Defense Chiefs. They held a series of meetings on various dates. And at some point, appointed five man special committee. For the final submission and review of partitioning suggestions. Or proposals from the general committee members. Some members of the committee submitted their respective suggestions or proposals. Which were generally and separately discussed, reviewed and analyzed. By all the committee members, leading to the unanimous adoption of the announced map of. Five regions and forty states of Biafra Confederation. With eight states for each region. We are not fighting for regions, same way we are not fighting for states. But we are only fighting for the great Biafra Confederation. That encompasses both the regions and the states. Using four cardinal points, some states are located in more than one region. But can only belong to one region. And by the Biafra government's order and policy of equal national representation. Or some states cardinal points. Location were adjusted to accommodate the necessary requirement of. Eight state for each region, all connected by land. Therefore, it is wise and important for all Biafrans to abide by the decision of Biafra de facto government. As future structural amendment exists. Not only for the regions but also for the states, counties and wards in freedom. Right now, Biafra is in struggle and everything must not be perfect. So today we are being hosted. By the eastern region of the Biafra Confederation. Comprising eight states. Namely. Idung Ibon state. Akapik Oro state. Abba state. Kalaba state. Eda state. Ikam state. Ebony state. And Ohaoukou state. So there's no much history to talk about. The regions or the eastern region which is hosting us today. Everything began the day we created the states, all the regions. Thank you so much for listening, great Biafrans. I yield my mic from here.
Okay, thank you so much, C O A, for this. Wonderful presentation on the other Sunday. We'll go to item number five. We'll go to item number five. Okay. Um, please, COA, moderate the program. Over to you. COA. COA, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
I say you should moderate the program, so from number five.
All right. All right. So we move to the next item in the agenda. Excuse me. Okay. We proceed. We go to number five, the presentation of the traditional kola knot. And on this, I will invite the admin of Idun Ibon State to come and do the presentation. Or his representative.
Biafrans, all for the world, greeting from here. I want to present the kola knot. It is our tradition, our eastern and even my state, especially Ibon State. So, proceed. Please, I want me to use phalabula because it's traditional something.
It is break the kola. Are we not going to break the kola? So, honorable.
Yes.
Break the kola well so that we can start picking the kola.
I break the kola knot. This way, kola knot. I take it. So, each state can come and pick the kola knot. Take it. In a sixty thousand a year.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. And so, fellow fans, lovers of them, we have the kola knot ready now to be picked. So it is time for everyone to begin to take the kola knot. We are taking the kola knot right now. So everyone is welcome to raise your hand and pick the kola knot. As I see, that table is very rich. So I want to see hands up, hands up. All right, item. This is three.
We're starting by state by state.
Okay, I should go state first? All right. Okay, let us follow the direction leading to us. So to pick the kola knot now and support the breaking of the kola knot. We want all the states of the first of the eastern region to take the lead, to forward to the forty states, because the eastern region is hosting us. So they will have to take lead. So on behalf of Ohaoukou State, we are taking the kola knot with some of thirty thousand AJ. Ohaoukou State taking the kola knot with thirty thousand AJ. Maybe I should be playing the eastern region. One. So I call on Idun Ibon. You have taken, Idun Ibon has taken with fifty thousand AJ. Has taken with thirty thousand AJ. I call on Akapik Oro. Akapik Oro admin of state. Come and pick the kola. So we move on. Akapik Oro, or anyone from Akapik Oro of state can pick the kola on behalf of his or his. No comment, please. If you are hearing my voice, please switch to action so that wonderful Biafrans, the kola knot is on the table. And we need to take the kola knot. State by state, first, begin with eastern. Akapik Oro, are you there? Okay. We can come back to Akapik Oro. We go to Abba State. Admin of Abba State, or any member or citizen of Abba State, come and pick the kola knot on behalf of your state. I want to see hands up, only one hand. Abba State citizens, where are you? Abba State executives, admin, where are you? We must make this to happen. It is not going to happen by itself. Everything you see in life did not exist on their own. People made them to exist. So if Abba State must be great, someone will have to make it great. It is our responsibility to make our respective state great. Tonight, by taking kola knot on behalf of our state. Abba State. Okay, maybe Abba State citizens are not here. We will come back to them. So we move to Kalaba State. Kalaba State, okay. Let me pick this hand. Go ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead. Am I coming out?
Yeah, you're
Okay, okay, go ahead, go ahead. You can go ahead and pick.
Good evening, house. I'm everybody.
Please.
At the end, I salute you. Honorable self-promotion, I salute you. I don't know who is Abba admin. I'm coming to represent. But I'm not one of officers, but I cannot sit down here. I stayed in the corner and I was surprised. And I'm taking this opportunity to call those who are the decision makers or who are chair of the Abba State, let them come, because Abba is like the end. All the town was made, is others made. I'm here, Abba. Abba should buckle up. Let them tell you what we're doing. On behalf of, on behalf of Abba, I will give thirty to pick kola. And then, because I will be going, I will do my own business. I will be giving twenty, on behalf of my family and I will be giving twenty, and that is making all the fifty. Tomorrow, I will send it to Minnesota. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. That is great. I love the fact that you did not let your state down. Every state citizen, it is your duty in order this to represent your state. If your admin is not up, and you can't start up and be needed for. So, I appreciate you for putting up the responsibility. All right, we go to item. This is three. Go ahead, put yourself and speak. Item, this is Elsie, can you hear? Go ahead and speak. We are taking the kola. We have enough kola on the table. And the kola has been broken for our servants. Everyone is eligible to take kola. Even if you're a woman, there is other there. You can take other. And if you look very closely at the table of the meeting, there are many other wishes. You can take anything just from the table of the state. So let us make it happen. Without delay. But go ahead and speak, item.
Am I coming up loud, please?
So you are coming on.
Okay. Even though I am having network issues tonight, whatever else to go cadem in our side.
Seems like
are we here? On behalf of the people of that I am representing, I don't know whether I have connected. Hello, I
You are cannot repeat your state's name for us again. Seems like I lost him again. I talk so bad. Okay, yeah. Go ahead, go ahead now. You are clear.
Okay, good day. As deputy head of the region and also Ikom State representative. And we, the Ikom people, who were represented in the east here, we are picking the kola. We did total sum of four hundred and ninety-nine thousand ARA from Ikom State.
Honorable. We have police here on this Zoom. Yeah. Arrested for any one to abuse, we are here.
We want to make each state region, the other, other region. We want people coming to this. Like I said before, my name is Honorable God with him. The Ikom State has been straight across. I was as the deputy head of the eastern region. I repeat, we are putting the kola knot with a sum of nine, with a sum of four hundred and ninety-nine thousand AJ from here.
All right.
Effects.
That is wonderful. Thank you so much.
Singing to anyone that has made a move of I will make sure for us, please.
Okay. And please, if you finish speaking, you put down your hand, make sure that we know that you are on. Okay? Otherwise
For now, you should, those hold it on, on Koli State first. Let them fish and go.
You know, I will by their hands. Okay? So if you are coming, make sure that you are coming for your state or on behalf of your state for now. You can ask what for yourself. Then we move to other state. Other state admin or representative. Um, okay. Bring in the yoke. Let me take the hands that I'm seeing on the screen.
Hello, Biafrans.
Hello, welcome.
I read my heart because there's a correction that was supposedly made. I read my heart because that's, um, a correction that was supposedly made. So, you did not correct Ecom admin. You started it, you realize he made a mistake and you needed to correct him, but you didn't. Um, this is.
I corrected it.
For.
This meeting is being recorded.
Our rule states that if you want to mention your donation. Is either a J. If you raise your hand to speak, when you finish, you lower your hand. If you don't, that's a penalty for you. So, everybody should take that into their brain. And the admins at home, you teach your members. Because we are getting ready to move into our new nation and we are not going with old clothes and old behavior. We have rules and regulations and we obey rules and regulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bring New York. And so if you are raising your hand, you are going to take Gula for your state. Either as a citizen, as an admin, or a representative. You can as well take for yourself after you have taken Gula for your state. Both men and women are welcome. If you look at our table of the meeting, it is so rich with many items. So, you can make a choice there. So I take, um, Okudle Somer. Your hands are up. Over you. Okudle Somer, your hand is up. It seems like Okudle Somer has disappeared, so we move to Victor. Okay, Victor Maso, go ahead and speak. Victor Maso, over to you.
Am I audible, am I coming out?
You can raise your voice a bit.
Alright, well, if I'm audible, I just want to use this opportunity to say. Uh, Biaros, I believe we are over sixty-five of us are here right now and many will be joining. If you are listening to my voice right now, you can understand that we are in a serious business. So if you think that you will come here and just stay on the destination and occupy the host business for that reason, you are. You are doing yourself. Many are called, few are choosing. We are fighting for our freedom, we must fight. No sleeping, Mazinam the country is dead. Anyway, I will not waste much of our time. So I'm encouraging each and every one of us that are here, raise up your hands, raise up your hands and keep whatever you have. I'm going to support right now. I'm from all the states, I'm a citizen of all the states, I'm going to support my state for now, some of fifty thousand Aja, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. True, and I like what he said. Raise your hand and do the needful, that's why we are here. Everything we are doing is towards the promotion and restoration of them collectively. So if you are here with us, it is your duty to participate in what we are doing. Do not only be.
Sir, go ahead and call these states, as you have called Edda, please, uh, please, I hope you are here.
Yes, I, he's treating those who raise hand, let them adjust.
For now, hands should hold on, let all the states run their decision before their hand will come to general support.
Okay, um, we move to E.
Yeah, hold on, yeah, hold on, let me take the mic. Thank you, Biaros, it is very important that beginners of your base, when your state is called. You'll do the needful to give a, a supportive, encouraging backup. You know, challenges we are having is that some of our home base have been discouraged with some other competitive. Challenge facing with Tungosa or a busy team. And it's affecting them, which cause a lot of states suffering quachaco in gathering their members. However, it is the duty of the people living abroad to always with time periodically. Visit your state, identify with the administrators, give them motivative encouragement. Motivate them by giving them some backup arrangements and guidelines on how the state will be functioning. So that in the time of this gathering, you will not be disappointed that your state is called. And became as though there is no existed being in that state where you are doing very well, living comfortable in another man's country. While we are struggling to seek on how we can better our country so that we can go home. And enjoy the natural and the man-made amenities. Uh, because of that, uh, um, I'll be supporting Edda state, although I've been trying to work. In synergy with the some administrators, also even taking the lead to seek if I can hold a meeting with Edda state. But the challenge is beyond control. When our brother here, good guy was speaking, I told him I was in communication with Edda state admin. He even sent me a screenshot, the challenge is facing to go in in the forum. But in any case, I've been supporting on behalf of Edda state. Uh, with a sum of thirty thousand AJ to ensure that the name of Edda did not be called and in a waste. Also seek in the, in the audience and the. To every Edda being, wherever you are. Do justice to that and bring in your one AJ to help in a long way to represent us uniformly. And also support the cause of Biaros through the.
Thank you. So we move to Kalabat State. Admin of Kalabat State. Or a representative or a citizen of Kalabat State. It's over to you. And you know, honorable Minister of Interior, their names did not bear their state. Uh, we'll be picking the hand.
Uh, like, um, like Kalaba, you can leave Kalaba and go to other states now, call other states.
Okay, Ecom State have spoken, then Eboni State.
Okay, it's my turn.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you so much, everyone, in this. Town hall meeting, it's a great privilege to all of us to gather here again. And, um, we are making progress. And Eboni State is going to present the little what we have. COA, sorry, Minister of Information, I think there's something I send to you. I don't know if you can play that music to us, CO, Minister of Information.
Honorable, we are still on the picking of Gula.
Uh, Eboni is presenting, this is a part of things that they want to use to present their Gula.
Okay, alright, alright, sir, thank you.
Eboni State have, Eboni State have a special number.
Okay. Alright, we will come back to Eboni State when they are ready.
Please address Mongoba, address Mongoba so that you have been raising hand for a long time.
And that's the hand in the screen, and I want to call it. So Mongoba, over to you. Mongoba, over to you, your hand is up.
Check, can I put this somewhere?
Look, I'm seeing the, the hands. Okay, am I coming out? Yes, you are coming out, go ahead.
Yeah, because I'm trying to almost since, but it's not working. Uh, good evening, my ministers in the house.
Good evening.
Uh, uh, special greetings to my. And our information, Mr. Miles Sanaabara. Welcome to Eastern Region of Biarosland. Devon, we are seeing you.
Thank you.
They were from here.
They were.
Um, on behalf of my notary John, I'm supporting fifty thousand AJ to Eastern.
Yeah.
Region of Biarosland, thank you, Devon.
They were.
Good evening all.
Thank you.
Good evening all.
Go ahead, good evening.
Good evening, welcome.
I'm Okudle Somer from Ihoronha State, the financial director, on behalf of Ihoronha State. I am giving five thousand AJma.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so. Ihoronha State, okay.
We move to Ochendu, Mwabiafra.
Is, is anybody writing this down or do you, do you need help? Is anybody writing it down, these amounts?
Someone should be writing it.
Okay.
Honorable, uh, Interior.
I think, Sonny, Sonny, are you, are you ready?
No, that's not.
Interior, Interior is asking you, if anybody has been appointed to write it down.
Okay, 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 uh, no.
Someone is writing, yes.
Sistan K, you can go on.
Okay.
Ebon, Ebon State is in that.
Let me get.
Sistan K.
My financial director is writing down.
Uh, Sistan K can do also.
Not problem, I'll get them. Okay. Yes, they did not, they are supposed, the people organizing, they should have. Realized that they need to keep a record of this.
They are doing that, they are doing that.
Yeah, but it wasn't, what happened to those that when we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten donations already? Do you have the records?
We have records.
Okay.
So you can go ahead and play for us, Sonny, let Eboni just come on stage.
I think when Sonny is ready, he will let us know now.
Okay, uh, we can, you can just move on, um. Whenever it's ready, he will come and play for us. So I'm going to call all, uh, call Eboni, uh, based on how we structure our state. I call Ebon, uh, uh, Easy Region. I can come up and announce, uh, the donation that all the counties donated. Easy Region, over to you.
What's the name of the Easy Region?
Um, I think Frank. Frank, are you here?
He may not be here with Frank. As a name.
Okay.
That's Easy Region here, who is a co-host.
Okay.
But he's muted, he or she is muted.
I'm in place. Easy Regions, open the mic. Then if there is. But if there is. Is it coming out?
He's not speaking yet.
Okay, I have a network, so I call up. I, I call, um, Equal Region, Equal Region, over to you.
Hello, are you hearing me?
Yeah, we can hear you, okay, you hold on, you hold on.
This is Easy Region, Easy Region.
They cannot interrupt you, they cannot interrupt.
Hello, can you hear me? This is Easy Region.
We can hear you, you guys, hold on.
Okay, uh, greeting to our APM. And Mr. Region Admin, and as well, Ebon State Admin. I hereby represent Easy Region. Based on the donation and the Gula North. I start by the county. Yodo County is hereby pledged one hundred and fifty AJ.
Fifty.
Next, yes, one hundred and fifty AJ. Next, Eboni County, pledge one hundred and fifty AJ. Next, Easy County, one hundred and fifty AJ. Next. Ekumeni County, one hundred and twenty AJ. Next, Ibeogo County, one hundred and thirty AJ. To support the movement. Of the Eastern Region and the Death and Respiration at large.
Thank you.
What's the total?
The total.
To be seven hundred.
Yes. Yes, exactly.
Thank you so much, Easy County for.
It's seven hundred thousand AJ.
Thank you.
Exactly.
Thank you so much, Easy County, for this wonderful presentation.
Seven hundred thousand AJ, seven hundred thousand AJ.
Thank you so much.
Gano.
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much, Easy Region, for this wonderful presentation. We are looking forward also to call, uh, Equal Region. Equal Region, the floor is open, over to you, sir.
Good evening, everybody in the house.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Yes, I represented the Equal Region as Eboni is being structured. Here from the counties, according to the counties, we have allocated. Eight more, eighty-seven thousand four hundred AJ. Amagukanti, sixty thousand AJ. Inimagukanti, one hundred and forty-three thousand AJ. Ekomakakanti, one hundred thousand AJ. Etarakanti, it's eight thousand AJ. Making total of. Making total of four hundred and seventy thou- four hundred and seventy-eight thousand AJ. This our little contribution to support our Chief Admin, who know how to play the game best, with the name of the Lord and the Lord, in this light, in the name of Jesus.
Amen.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much, Equal Region for this, uh, a wonderful presentation. Permit me to call Azar Region to come on stage, Azar Region, over to you.
Azar Region.
Greetings. Greetings, everyone.
Welcome.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
I thank you all, may God bless all of you.
Bless you too.
Yeah, uh, according to Azar Region donation. Uh, we donated according to counties. Uh, Ameka County donated seventy-three thousand five hundred AJ. Umesokoa County donated one hundred and ten thousand four hundred AJ. Umesa Alorisok County donated one hundred and fourteen thousand AJ. Idembia County donated one hundred and forty-one thousand AJ. Oboji County donated one hundred and ten thousand AJ. Total is six hundred and eleven thousand four hundred.
Wow.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much, uh, thank you so much, Azar Region for this, uh, great achievement. May Elohim guide you guys, as I'm talking to you now. All the three corner of the regions of Aboni State, there are numbers up to hundred and something people gathering together and listening to this program. Permit me also to call what we called our network gadgets.
Mm-hmm.
According to the structure that we place in Aboni, which could not allow our enemies to break Aboni. Started by our Parliament. We have Saint Teresa Parliament donated thirty thousand AJ. We have Onneke Parliament, twenty thousand AJ. We have Eco Parliament, thirty thousand AJ. We have Honorable New Parliament, twenty thousand AJ. We have Isheka Parliament, twenty thousand AJ. Total of one hundred and twenty thousand AJ. Um, I want to use this opportunity also to appreciate, uh, the individuals who supported this town hall meeting, which I may not call all their names, but the total figure of the individuals who donated, the total amount is eighty-five AJ. And we are looking forward to make more progress in this.
Eighty-five thousand. Eighty-five.
May Elohim protect and guide all of us. So, um, this is what Aboni have for now, here. We will come back again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You, thank you. My mic is dead.
Yes, this is what Aboni has, um, presents to you guys.
Thank you so much, Aboni State, that was awesome. Alright, fellow people, we are still on the. We are still picking the kola, so all the states in the Eastern Region are picking the kola except. State admins, any official or citizen, you can raise your hand and represent your state. And I have a hand here, Akajako Nobah, over to you.
Thank you, CEO, yeah, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Okay, yeah, good thing fellow Biafrans, please permit me to stand on the system protocols. Yeah, I already made my personal donation to our CEO here, but I want to support my state. Uh, State Admin, I does state with a sum of twenty thousand AJ. I was saying to CEO way tomorrow morning.
Thank you. Thank you, picking the kola can support your state. That is why, so the floor is open, the, 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 the picking of the kola. Everyone must participate in it, look at our table, it is very rich. Respect the table by picking one, at least one thing to nourish your body from the table. We want to see hands up before we move to the next item on the agenda. Alright, Onyese, Overe State Admin, over to you.
Thank you, my brother, thank you. Good evening, everyone, lovers of freedom. I am Onyese from Overe State. I am picking the kola with a sum of five thousand AJ. And using this opportunity at the same time to invite all, all Biafrans to the Central Region Meeting, which will be coming up on the twenty-third, which is next Sunday. Thank you and God bless you.
God bless you.
You, thank you, Onyese, Overe State, five thousand.
Yes, so Victor also again, your hand is up. Over to you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Onyese, bring down your hand.
Thank you very much. Um, I want to use this opportunity to call on my brothers and sisters, most especially in Portugal. Portugal is not just a small country, we, we know we are few in Portugal. But, uh, I know that we have more and more Biafrans in Portugal. The reason why I'm going to use this video to extend this message to all Biafrans in Portugal. If you are sleeping, it's time for you to wake up. Uh, with all due respect, I am representing Portugal, I am the, one of the, I am the representative of Portugal. And without wasting much of our time, uh, I'm going to support from my own state, which I am a member, my own country, I'm going to support with fifty AJ. But I'm using this opportunity to let her know that I cannot do it alone. I need your support, we need your support, just like every other person. If I am not here, then who would be? You, or I, you must be, I am a human, we are all Biafrans, nobody is bigger than you. This is the right time to key in for what we are. We fight for freedom, it's not giving, but it's taking, you can see, I'm not sitting, none of us here either. I will not waste much of our time, I've given myself my mission, but this is a team of collection, uh, collective efforts, it's not for one person. God bless you, thank you.
Thank you, God bless you. Yes, fellow Biafrans, look at the table of our meeting, the kola notes, pieces of kola notes, there are too many. There are over eighty million pieces of kola notes, enough to go round the entire forty state of Biafra. So, we need to bring it down to zero. So we need more hands up, over to you, United Kingdom, Victor.
COA, COA, that's a violation.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Nonsor, you finished talking and you did not bring down your hand, so you are attracted a fine, pay your ticket.
Alright, uh, it's very, very important to respect the law and respect the, the rules. So I'm going to, uh, object, be fined with five AJ, thank you.
Thank you. You're a good Biafran.
Now we have some hands, so let us take them please, without delay, United Kingdom, over to you.
Okay, so, are we, we're now, uh, so general taking of kola?
Yes, general taking of kola not.
Oh.
For your state.
Oh, okay, so I'm Allo State, alright, so I'm on behalf of our law, yeah, I will take, uh, um, with hundred thousand AJ. Yeah, for status, so I'll write it for myself and remit it to COA, yeah, immediately. Alright, so Allo State, hundred thousand AJ. Okay.
Wow.
Thank you, I'm clear.
Thank you. Alright, are you done?
Uh, yep.
Your hand is still up, is that a thumb up?
No, she's still thumb up, she knows she break the rule, she pay the fine.
Okay, 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 so Techno, come on twelve, over to you.
Okay. Hello. Greetings. Biafrans, I greet you.
Welcome.
Yeah, I'm from Huku State, um, supported my representative. The big kola note with a sum of thirty thousand AJ.
Okay.
So, that is, I greet everybody, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Techno, come on twelve, are you in the Huku State platform?
Yes, yes, but I cannot unmute my phone and, uh, you know what we are battling here in our Huku, so that's why we are just, uh, seems as if we are not, uh, doing something, I suppose, but we are getting something on the ground right now.
Okay, go to the Huku platform, under Brigi, drop me a message there, you will search for CEO here, leave a message for me, okay?
Okay.
Alright, don't worry about what, nothing, we are not defeated.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Alright, so we have our top, to take more of the kola note. And we have maybe from Alanso State, over to you.
Yeah, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening all, welcome.
Yeah, CEO, thank you so much. I wanted to thank our, uh, APM, APM, welcome to Eastern Region. Uh, greeting to all the Brigi Cabinet that are here present, thank you so much. We are seeing all the, all your handwork, uh, is playing out. Even the blind can testify that. So without taking our time, on behalf of, uh, Alanso State, I'm picking a kola with a sum of ten thousand AJ.
Yes, so.
Thank you so much, we move.
We move, thank you, Alanso, and I've written it down.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Alanso, we need more hands up. We need more hands up to take the kola, remember that we are in the Eastern Region of Biafra Confederation Town Hall Meeting, you know what it represents? It is the very place that the sun rises. So, it is over to you to make the sun that is rising shine from this. Alright, Nama, watching again, over.
They were not.
They were.
I hope you can imagine what talk, APM. APM this day, Regional Town, Town Hall Meeting, it's a wonderful thing that there. I've gained more experience and been a lot on this town hall meeting. I thank, uh, the board that bring the idea. And this is, it are bring, it are begin to resurrect counties. So I'm happy and I pray that it will continue like this. On behalf of Allo State, I'm, uh, picking the kola with ten thousand AJ, they were.
They were, Nama.
Nama.
Allo do, ten thousand AJ, okay, thank you, Nama, Dano. Everything is.
That guy done, bless you.
Alright, keep making it happen, we are still picking the kola. We are about sixty-five here in the Zoom. Everyone in the Zoom needs to take kola note and also take away. You eat in and you take away. It is allowed, the table is so rich, don't go away tonight with kola. It is very, very important, back to the meeting, respect the tradition. Remember, it is called traditional kola meeting, so we are doing it traditionally. Respect your tradition, we are picking kola, I need to see hands up, please. Honorable Biafran, we need to see hands up, alright, Dazea, over to you. She does here, go ahead.
Alright, good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, fellow Biafrans, good evening, I think I'm in.
Uh fellow Biafrans, good evening, Martin Prime Minister. Uh good evening, the Honorable Minister of Information and Communication. The Undeputable Minister of Information and Communication. It is pathetic for the enemies and those who want to make freedom fighting as the occupation and the profession. That it's only two men that hold them, hold the ransom. Upon all their professorship and the doctorship, they're pinned down and never to rise again. I salute Martin Prime Minister, I salute the Honorable Ministry of Communication. I salute the leadership of the Biafran, the fatiga, coming to homeland, of which so many of them are represented here. From the Secretary of State, to the C O A, to the Minister of Interior, to the Minister of Finance. And all admins and county admins, district mayors, and every one of you. You made it happen, and each day we will grow. The number we are here today, or the number we are in our counties and various districts and states cannot determine how we shall be before the end of this year. It is all about projections in a mathematical way. So, fellow Biafrans from all over the world, depending on time zones, wherever you are doing this Zoom meeting from. You can find, you can attest yourself that this is not uh a monogamian as usual. Where you have Town Hall Meeting, see US in Texas, in California, other states. In Germany, you could eat tiam, and you will wear your shaggo to display your, your regalia there. But this side you is hiding your stupidity. This is a time to flush out our stupidity and taking in the reserve of ours. This is not time for political correctness, it is not time to speak Queen English. It is not time to please anybody, this is a time to displease everybody and make sure you please the spirit of Biafra. Regardless of who is involved. Chief Chukemeka of the Megu Juku of blessed memory, I went to the leader, used his father's money to defend the nation. Some idiot made fortunes of it, became millionaire, millionaire after the war. In the same sense, the misled leader of the Najadetan uh um emancipation movement, men. Chiefs Asari dot com, put his life on the verge, and some idiots still come up and made a fortune from it. No matter what Asari has today, he's just a pin of what he's supposed to have. Some people use it as a business, own airlines, other businesses. How can you be profiting from your own freedom? How? Some idiot wants to still divide into fracas, into fractious processes. I will salute the land of the rising sun in the Biafra land, which is the eastern part of the Biafra region. I will salute the executives and all who made it possible for us to gather here today. Yes, initially when the issue of regional government came up, regional structure. They kicked that, they said, they wrote to our Prime Minister in Finland to assert his uh position on the regional structure. But you know what? Biafra is a moving train.
Yes.
No one can stop us. Also, ever good, I reminded our Prime Minister, sometimes I said, I said, you told us that. Do not stop a system that works. And he agreed with me, yes. I said, okay, stay aside, don't interrupt the system that it works, for now. Okay, Chuku system is the system that it works. Take a time. Which I know I say, the Chuku karma, Boston is the best. And now we have all the Chuku in our midst, what is you guys' problem? The Chuku that is, that karma is not in our midst. Do you want to kill your red maker? He will kill his red maker, kill his this. And my salute goes to Ebony State, the most structured state in the entire Biafra land. I want to ask them, yes. I am stateless, but I come from the state, but there are mine in Ebony State. And I will support the body with their indestructibility. With their um uh formidableness. With the sum of twenty thousand euro, or twenty thousand A G.
So.
The admin, the admin is so much in his correct positions. That's no admins that live now, in this minute, that challenge his structure. And they challenge and put into all the entire five regions of Biafra. All the regional heads, this is a challenge to you, replicate Ebony State. Replicate the state of Ebony, under the leadership of a volunteer minister. He's a man that know how to do, my respect to you sir. Then I want to remind fellow Biafrans all over the world that the destiny of Biafra is not in any man's hands. It is in the hand of the Almighty Chuko Kikabiam. To him who give gifts. And to him who validate gifts, he, it is, there is one thing to, to be giving gifts. And there's nothing for the person that give you the gift to validate the gift that he gave to you. Don't behave as you have known, your professorship, your doctorship, you have a master's degree, you have a bachelor's degree. H and D, N I A, N C E, and whatever, cannot justify your trajectory of progress in life. What justifies it is your, or continue to do, you say you must be dedicated and applied, self-discipline. In this, I have seen in this hour of God's time, okay, Chukum Kere. And let me remind the Biafrans that since the mona, mm mm uh uh since, since the inception of this struggle. Have never joined left wing, anywhere success goes, that is the right direction.
That's true.
I cannot start naming them, from the time of Uchemo Four, having issue with the Mamaze. I was in the forefront, I was in the meeting with Uchemo Four, I was in the meeting with the Mamaze, we know what we did. I choose the right path, Uchemo Four was used by God to stood against these monsters. At the point, Uchemo Four started misbehaving. There was another right wing that he created that betrayed him, that gave birth to China Samuru. Uchemo Four created with a wing that betrayed him, himself. And when our Prime Minister came on board, as a new person in the struggle, who joined in two, twenty nineteen, we guided him. With every wisdom that is in us, and he never made a mistake, and he chose wisely. Even in his choosing, there are foolish ones among him. Like the, the, eh former Minister of Defense, like eh 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 his C O S, they had to finish the left wing in his group. Today they are separated, and we are left with one singular individual called God's Time, okay, Chukum Kere. And then they go, okay, Chuku Karma, follow God's time. And your time shall meet you. This is my advice to all admins, go back to work. It's time to work, and any admin that is not working, that is therefore gossiping will be removed, I try to leave out. Notice. It does not matter who you are, if we are five states, let's remain five states, if a ten states, we remain ten states. But well-functioned and formidable states. Thank you, Martin Prime Minister, thank you, my son, thank you, everyone, cautious people within the Zoom, I hear my mic, they were.
They were. Sir, thank you.
Alright, we are. We are still picking kula. As I always say, if you take a look at our table of the meeting, there's enough there to go round. We don't have one, I'm one, we have grand not, we have African salad. And we have something like yams that are roasted. We have osoji, we have angara. Please, Biafrans, let us make this occasion memorable indeed by by the foreign table of the meeting, it is for all of us. So we want to see more hands up before we move to the next item on agenda. We want to see more hand. More hands. Okay, Reg and Furi, over to you, Wachinake, Reg.
Okay, Udayo Wachinake, thank you very much, moderator. Greetings to you, Biafrans, out of the world. Greetings to you, my honorable Minister of his, uh of, of information, honorable Sony Akbarawa. The Okoko Dem of our days, the best information eh minister that any nation will have. And we'll just go to sleep, go and rest, thank you very much, we appreciate everything that you agree for us. Greetings to my honorable Minister, uh my honorable A P M, His Excellency, you get to cook here. Greetings to all our leaders from time past to this representative, to all the cabinet ministers of the Biafra Republic Government in Eza. You are the best, like I told you, you are not getting your flowers now, but the best flower you are going to get is the freedom of Biafra, the freedom of the people. Um from greetings to all the military, the Biafra Defense Forces, from the highest to the lowest. These are the men and women that are defending our babies, women and children, our civilian populace, especially the Christians. Upon this genocide that has been declared, greetings to you, Biafra Defense Forces. And to all the international community that are speaking about the plight of Christians and of Biafra, Biafrans. I really want to say thank you so much, uh representative from Isoko, Urubu State of Biafra. Uh I'll be supporting today's fundraising for the defense of babies, women and children, and the freedom of Biafra with the sum of uh two thousand A G. And uh yes, and I also want to let our people know that uh freedom is our right. Freedom is your right, freedom is my right, that's why I will sign up by saying, get up, stand up.
Yes, sir.
Stand up for your right. Get up, stand up, Biafrans, don't give up, Biafrans. Just get up, stand up. Stand up for your right, Biafrans, get up, stand up. Don't give up, Biafrans. Don't give up, Biafrans. We will never give up the fight, we will never give up, Biafrans. We will never give up life, we will never give up our freedom. We will never give up our culture. Don't give up, Biafrans, rise up, don't give up, Biafrans, wake up. Isoko, wake up. People, wake up. Biafrans, wake up. Get up, get up, get up, get up, get up, get up, get up now. Don't give up, Biafrans. Don't give up, Biafrans. We will never give up our life, we will never give up our culture. Okay, Biafrans, thank you very much, I hear the magic.
Thank you.
Reg.
You, donation. Alright, Reg and Furi, you didn't allow. You can re, make your fundraising, but remember that we are picking kula, alright? We move to Ochendu, Wabiafra. Ochendu, Wabiafra, Ochendu, over to you. Ochendu, you have raised your hand before, we called you, but you didn't speak, now you are not speaking again. Alright, we move to James Adenu African Red, honorable, over to you, sir.
Yes, a very good evening, Eastern Region Biafra Land.
Good evening.
Appreciate you.
Whatever.
It's our home meeting, you have organized to bring our people together. May Chukukabiam, everyone of us, that freedom that we desire so much. Um I appreciate our A P M, our Information Minister. And every cabinet member, honorable, and indeed, the whole of Biafra, I appreciate you all. I also appreciate our uh Minister of Success that just spoke. And I thank him very much for not standing on the left wing. And I want to use this opportunity to also tell people. Biafrans all over the world, don't ever find yourself in the left wing. Always follow where the light is shining, and the light is where I stand. I want to pick uh that uh what the table that our C O S is talking about. There is the particular meal I like, a lot of times in Bongo, I call Bongo, that's ex-country. Ex, ex Nigeria, there is a particular thing, a some, that's Masabara, you understand it, a some, that is some that is, that's what you normally saw. That is the one I am picking now, and I am picking it with twenty A G. Just that one, I'm not greedy, just one, it's long time I tested it and I am picking it now directly from that table. And I am taking it now.
Even if.
Thank you.
It, it is enough to go round as many, okay? They were, please, the table is already. You. Greetings, greetings, my ministers.
Greetings.
Um I'm so sorry, I was trying to mute myself, but it was not going through, but thank God I'm able to. I hope I'm being heard.
Yes, you are.
Okay, uh um good afternoon, my A P M, Mazi Oggetukukere. I really thank God for your life, for what God is using you to do. And I also thank uh our Minister of Information, Chief Sony Aparawa. You are indeed God-sent to this uh 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 generation. And I also thank all the ministers who are doing one or two things to make sure that we keep this movement going. May Chukukabiam continue to bless each and every one of you. And the donors, everyone of you who are supporting in one way or the other, financially or whatever you're doing to make sure this uh cause is moving forward. It's only God that will reward each and every one of us, and I believe that the only reward God will reward us is Biafra and nothing else. So I'm using this medium to, also um I think one of my brother from other state has um picked the kula not, I also want to add to.
Has um, picked the color note. I also want to add to what he contributed. With the sum of eh, fifty Ajma. May God bless us.
Much. And we move to. M L K. Rap, Brigi. Maz, M L K, over to you, sir.
All right, thank you, thank you, uh, C O A. Um, thank you very much, uh. I also thank. Everyone that. Everyone that has con- contributed to eh. To make this. Uh. I'm having trouble, um, opening my eh. Okay, there we go. Wait a minute, I thought it did. One, one moment, please, one moment. There. Yes, sir, yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you, my Minister of Information. So yeah, I, I'm, I am giving a lot of credit to the ministers. Uh, in the de facto, uh, uh, all the state, uh, representatives who are, who of eastern region of Biafra land. Who have, uh. You know. Come together to eh, make this a success. Uh. I also greet my eh. Uh. Acting Prime Minister. Uh, His Excellency. Honorable. Oge. Nkere. Um. This is the opportunity also to eh. Uh, greet eh. Our B D F. You know, our B D F, they are the backbone. Of this struggle. In fact, they are at the tip of the spear. So I, I duff my hat to them. I also. Thank all the ministers in the house. Uh, and those that have spoken, especially eh. A chairman of the Defense Council. Uh, honorable success. I thank our. Uh.
Okay.
Past leaders.
Yeah.
I thank our past leaders. Uh. Generals. Uh, Effiong and Ojuwu. Uh. It is now that we realize what they were going through. Many of us had no clue. What those two went through. So it's coming to light. What they had to put up with. And I'm grateful to their contribution. I also. On the same note, eh, congratulate and thank Mazzi. Nam dekano, Onyendu. Who I believe. From day one that this is our Daniel in the lion's den. Eh. I knew. That it wasn't gonna be easy for the zoo. To carry out what they want to do. But again, I stay in prayer. And I stay in prayer. And I'm thankful that the Most High has kept him. Also. Thank the Most High for our Prime Minister. His Excellency, Honorable Simon Ekba. Uh. Who is being persecuted in Finland. Eh, and I'm convinced now that. Finland is, is. Is now shaking. Also in panic. I may say. Uh, you see, eh, we've come at a point where. You know, we, we say we crossed the Rubicon. Well, we have. Yes, we have. And. When you cross the Rubicon, you know, usually what the next thing that happens is that you take, you take down whatever led you to cross it, and you, you take down. The bridge you take down. If it's a rope, you take it down. You bring it down, everything. In that sense. We can't go back. So we, we are on a determined and serious journey. Uh. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to know that. We are close to our destination. And um. The closer we get. The. More elusive it would appear. But that's usually how it, it is. Uh, some people. Will continue. To, to mark us. Even when the whole world is talking about us. If any of us look back, say like. I say four, five years ago. We, we, we struggled to get the world to listen, to hear us. Where now? Uh. We are, we are no longer in the, in the, in the shades. You know, and the world knows exactly what's happening regardless of all the lies. The, the zoo country. Is trying to sell. So I thank. All those who have persevered. And remain steadfast. In this struggle. And I encourage you. To encourage others. You come across. To join us. Because let me tell you. Uh, th- th- this freedom. Is intoxicating. You will find out. When we get there. So I would like to pick eh. One of these, eh, they look like garden eggs. Is that what they are? I like to pick one of them. Uh. With eh, hundred Ajma. And eh. And I say, thank you again to all the. Administrators in the de facto. Government. And eh, we'll come back. I yield my mic. Thank you.
Thank you, honorable. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Red man.
Thank you, honorable. We are now getting closer to the next. Item on agenda. Let us take Mary. Mary, your hand is up. Over to you. Mary, are you there?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, A P M. Good evening, C O A. Good evening, our leader. Good evening, lover of freedom, everyone here. Yes, I just want to pick eh. The garden egg here. For eastern region. Because eh, our A P M. Is within the eh, physical host. So I want to pick eh, the garden egg. For ten Ajma eh, ten thousand Ajma Ajma for our A P M. Because you need to, when you come to people's house, you know, in our place. With eh, you know, you can turn our visitor. So behalf of eh, Irohibom. The eh, garden egg, ten thousand Ajma and eh. For our, I mean, our. I mean, for Irohibom, for your tweet and eh, ten thousand Ajma. So for supporting Irohibom, that is twenty thousand Ajma. Thank you very much. I mute my mic.
Yes, so.
Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you, Mary.
Ominkiruka. Good evening. Oh, thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay, Jack. Okay, we go to Jack.
Hmm.
Maz, Jack, over to you. Jack. Jack Omuches, you are there. Over to you. Mary, you can put down your hand. We have police here.
Call it. Mary. You, 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 you already got your ticket. Please pay your ticket.
Mary.
I will add eh. Five eh, eh, eh. Yeah.
Five thousand Ajma.
Five who? I will add two thousand Ajma.
Okay. She said two thousand. She said two thousand.
All right, say it, sir, I can hear it. You are no longer a youngster. All right. All right, I'll catch you dog a Kalantin.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll write it down for you now. Two thousand.
I will, tomorrow I will send it for our info, eh, our Information Minister. In the city.
Thank you. Mommy love. Good evening. Thank you very much.
Yes, our policeman.
Next time, be more careful, okay, dear?
Yes, I will.
First offense carries a small penalty. Second offense, it becomes. Um, deliberate disobedience and then the fee goes up.
It's good. I will. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, Jack, are you with us?
He is.
Are you having it? Over to you.
Hmm.
There's no time to wait to do it. Jack is having issues. He's raising double hand.
That should be Jack from UK, um. Yeah.
He's only one.
Sony. Didn't help, we can render to.
Can you hear me?
He is, he is vaccinated. Yes, so.
Okay, sorry, the mo- the meeting was not showing, so I couldn't unmute myself. Um, good evening, our A P M, um. Let me, pardon me to remain on eh, already established eh, protocol. Hmm. Um, I thank everybody here, my fellow citizens of Biafra. Attack all of us here gathered here today. Um. I want to take eh, color notes. With um, twenty Ajma. Uh, but before I go, I just want to, um. Drop eh, eh, food for thought for us. Shout those of us who are not supporting the freedom. Who are still on defense. Um, imagine that, um. When we get Biafra. In every museum in Biafra land. Those of us. Who have slaved, suffered, donated. Contributed in one way or the other. To make sure that this freedom, that this Biafra is gotten. And in every museum in Biafra land, our names and pictures. Have been placed in all of them. So that generations to come. Our unborn, even when we are gone. Our names, our faces. Echoed across every part of Biafra land. And even the tourists that will be coming across the world will come and see great men and women of Biafra. Who made it possible that their generation are enjoying what they are enjoying. That particular time. Imagine that your picture is there, that your name is captured. This is a food for thought. Cause this particular period is the period where we should all unite together and make this thing possible. We all want to go home. We all want to live in our beloved land. And that is why I will end it with this song. And everybody should have this song in mind to ask, to answer this question. Will your name, will my name, will your name be there? My name. Will your name, will my name be there? In the holy book of Biafra, will your name be there? Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. For your wonderful contribution. We are. Going to go to the next. Agenda.
Jack. Before you run away, the camera, I have to talk to you.
Okay, so let us have care of Israel. What do you?
You took his candle.
I think he has disappeared.
Well, I will catch him. He is in. I will send him after him. He can run, but he can't. Go and disappear.
He can run, but he can hide.
No, not in Biafra land.
They will know.
I D, so we can find you. You are not in the zoo. So the earlier you clear your name, the better. Yeah, he's here. Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes, so.
Okay, eh, eh, okay, sorry. I didn't know that break the rules. Eh, okay, I will add another twenty Ajma.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, they won't know.
Thank you, Nancy.
Okay. Let me take care of this because I, I don't like getting the ticket.
All right.
Uh, so I thank you. Everybody. Uh, especially our men on ground. Um. Like our brothers have been saying. You guys. You know, your name will be written. It's already written, actually. Because we are, no- nobody appointed you guys, but the Most High himself. Appointed you for the wonderful work you are doing. All the eh, men on, eh, you, all you, all our men in, in the factory governments. That are going through the brunt of the whole thing. And of course, you talk about our A P M. And eh, the cabinets. Um. And then we talk about our Onyendu. The saying, you know, Hason, like he says, if you want to do something right, you do it by your own self. So. We can see the great successes that he's making now. And then we, you know, we have our Prime Minister, Simon Eba. And everyone here of us here who have been contributing. I would encourage you to, you know. Keep the faith. You know, keep the faith. Get to the end so that you get the crown. Because the end is near, as you can see. Nobody needs to tell you that we are almost at the end. The end is near. So don't let anybody throw you out. Don't anything distract you. Just keep on going. Don't want to get to, almost to the station and then you are, you fall off. Okay, so. That, I would like to take some colors. Um. Take the garden egg and the color notes. On behalf of our Arizona and on behalf of Ekemba. Uh, let me take eh, fifty Ajma to take the color. And then I'll come back later. Thank you very much. Thank you, Aparawa. You are, you are really blessed. And of course, our A P M. You are all very blessed. We thank you.
Okay, begin, your, your hand is up.
Yes, so.
Okay, go ahead.
Biafrans, nde wono.
They were.
Marulile, nde wono, eastern region.
Yes.
Ekelem wono.
They were.
Ele promaya. De loche. Um. I send them back or I back, I hate or I hate, I don't know what they did with it, but it's still ringing at me. Yes, so, um, is bangaradema. And some are weakere. Um, I can meet time with. People. Special people. And those two special people. Ah, my A P M. And my Information Minister. Those are the guys I'm going to enjoy what I just picked with. On our way back, because eh, somebody said it could be lie, it could be true. That A P M showed up in Air Force One and. I'm going to go back with him because he don't look, live too far from. I'm going to go back with him, because he don't look, live too far from me. So on our way back, we'll be munching on those things I picked now.
Alright man.
Um, and it's gonna cost me three thousand one hundred and fifteen thousand AJ ma.
Oh my man.
That will have, have made an error, it's supposed to be AJ. But since I said the J, uh J ma instead of AJ, that's gonna cost me. Now everybody listen, because when you take this rule, the same rule applies to you, I don't look face. Okay, so I'm gonna pay a fine for that thing, saying AJ ma instead of AJ, alright? Now, I know APM is gonna talk, but they are delaying the talk and I just don't have patience to wait. Okay, um, because on I them patapate si lazy. So I'm gonna hurry up and appreciate whatever he is going to say. With another three thousand six hundred and fifteen AJ.
Wow.
So that's a total of seven thousand two hundred and thirty AJ. Uh huh, now, for my own error, which I'm going to pay. That will cost me hmm maybe, let's say, two thousand AJ for saying the wrong thing. So now, it's gonna be seven thousand four hundred and thirty AJ on my tab. They won't. And I look at my hand, because if I don't, that's another attraction of fine.
They won't. Yeah, but they won't.
They won't.
Uh you can, uh you can know what your fine is, but she can be the one to accept one. Yeah, but she, she does, it would be somebody, someone else, yeah, let her know what her fine is, thank you.
AP, what, then AP, I was thinking, I didn't hear him.
APM, it's not a fine.
Okay.
Over to you Madame Muki.
Hey, hey Minister Love, hey, you're gonna move on, I got the camera, I'm gonna make it on, alright, um, Mr. Love.
Remember, Muki, remember the law is blind.
Oh, it's true, hmm, okay.
Yeah, Biafrans.
Exactly, so no partiality at all, alright?
No man.
Hmm, okay, so to dedicate on uh Minister Love's uh predicament, yes, um, and then nothing less than uh uh twenty AJ, twenty AJ ma fine uh from her. Yes, Minister Love, and what do you have to say about it?
So now my fine will be twenty AJ ma?
Yes.
Alright.
Alright.
No problem, thank you for that.
They won't, they won't.
Thank you.
We need to speed up the meeting.
Okay.
The rest of the item on the table. At least within next two hours or thereabout. Yeah, spent a long time picking the color, and we, we will continue to pick, those whose hands are up. We will. Color, I mean to say.
Hmm.
When go fundraising law, you do your fundraising, you know, and you pick your color. The table is still rich and um, uh and you who is allowed. You go to the table and serve yourself as much as you can consume. But right now, we will have to bring the man of the moment to the podium. The man who has been tarring on his shoulder. His heavy weight of freedom. The freedom of Biafra people at the moment, many called him, did not name on my goals. But I call him him. Kinyroyi. Kinyroyi one. Now Biafra, as well, and it is no other person but, he is excellent. The acting Prime Minister of Biafra Republic Government in exile, Honorable Oguchukwu. Your water sir. Okay.
Evening, good evening my brother John, thank you for good work, for what you are doing. I'm gonna be taking um, for twenty pounds.
What did he say?
Twenty AJ ma?
No matter how you go about it.
Masie Oguchukunkere, Omali Chawoke, the Biafran Republic of NEXA Finance Minister. Is humbly campaigning for global Biafran financial support. For the purpose of Finland Convention, Biafran Defense Forces and Red Declarations related activities. I appreciate all Biafrans who have been supporting our liberation movement. I also urge everyone to massively support modern effort, especially in these critical times. Oh, my fellow lovely great Biafrans, let's come together and support our Prime Minister Massey Simoni Ba. Who is currently working tirelessly to hand over our freedom to us this year twenty twenty four. There is no magic to progress and success in life. Life is backward to give to it. It takes a man who believes in himself to create worlds, so keep working hard and never lose hope in what you believe in. Ayakata. Life is no issue. Sigh. Make it take and yeah yeah. I want to use this special opportunity to recognize great team Odwe Gudjuku. I can't also forget General Philip Effiong. Okama Dalosaw. Kamche tagwa no men on the ground, um omao kobiwe, anyina fua kolo. Airborne. The fact of government in homeland, she's an equal. A special recognition to every Biafran who have been supporting from day one. May you know him continue to flourish you in your different endeavors. This is. Mazinandikano, oh amadike, who are no Biafra. Egadi. The Prime Minister, Obatobiye. Ogachukunkere, Simukelekiyo, Okama.
Ogachio. Ogachukuka ma. Ogachukuka inayon, no, 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 no. Ogachukuka ma. Onyamana giti giti bakulon wonu. Ogachukuka ma. Well, did you book as a bele? Ogachukuka ma. Oh, get you oh. Ogachukuka ma. Mama beko yo goli sa. Ogachukuka ma. Ogachukuka inayon, no, no, no. Ogachukuka ma. Ogachukuka inayon, anyasi. Ogachukuka ma.
Ayole, ayiga kono la ya role nu. Uwe bole, cheta kwanaluba fo. One plus one is two, two plus two is four, you know. Onyepuru chi yusawa, no, 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 no. Joy, joy, joy. Don't give up. When eh, it's all close, it's all close.
Ogachukuka ma. Never you give up, no, no, no. Ogachukuka ma. You live in your dreams, brother. Ogachukuka ma. Never you say, no, no, no. Ogachukuka ma. Ogachukuka inayon. Ogachukuka ma. Never you down your bed, no, no. Ogachukuka ma. Keep your head up, keep on fighting. Ogachukuka ma. Ayava la, ayava la. Ogachukuka ma.
A big shout out to Masie Ogachukunkere, I salute you, my PM, Massey Simoni Ba. Life is sweet when you're patient, ah. The greatest shout out goes to the media team, great talents, they won't. Life is a process, no matter how you go about it. Masie Ogachukunkere, Omali Chawoke.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much, Minister of Information, Massey Soni, Aparawa. Thank you, you and the entire media team. We appreciate uh everything you are doing for the Biafran people, for your freedom, for my freedom, for all of us freedom. Remember our leader Oduku. A company by Philip Effiong. Philip Effiong once said, if the Nigerian government, if the Nigerian terrorist state, if the S Nigeria, did not trade the Biafran children right. Now we will rise up. Here we go. Minister Eminika, North and South American Rep have risen up. All of us here have risen up. The Eastern Region Admins and Executives, they have all risen up. Non-so here have risen up. All the honorable Ministers, Rep and Admins, we have all risen up. Rising up to do what? To fight for our freedom. To fight for our survival. We are not fighting for fantasy, rather for us to live. Those before us, they fought like a man. They fight very hard. And without the initiative that they have taken, we are not gonna be here today. They open our eyes, they enlighten us. Our leaders before us, they educate us and they gave us the reason why we should fight for our freedom. In Biafran today, there is ongoing war. The Nigerian terrorist state, the S Nigeria, they have not stopped fighting the Biafran Christians. They are planning the same goal of their father, Usman Fodo. For them to Islamize us, to take over our land, to overrun us. They are doing everything they can to achieve that their goal. The question is that we Biafrans of today, which generation of today, are we going to allow them achieve their goal? Instead of us to come together, to fight for this that we believe in. Instead of us to come to fight for what we believe in as Biafrans. Rather some are chasing shadow, rather some are fighting us that is fighting to free our people. Rather some tell us to be their enemy. It don't matter what they true opponents, it don't matter how much they sabotage us. That will not change the fact that we will be fighting until Biafra is free. All of our social media, instead of some Biafrans fighting to free us, to free, for our freedom. Rather, they choose to destroy our beautiful name. They choose to destroy our personality. They choose to work with the S Nigeria and the Islamic terrorist state. It's time we unite together and fight our one common enemy. The S Nigeria, the Islamic jihadist terrorists are called them blood-sucking demons. That is who they are. A group of people or ethnic group of people that have chosen to kill innocent children, baby's mother, father's uncle. Behaving people like they are slaughtering animal. These people are evil and barbaric. Any country in the world that supports this evil terrorist state of Nigeria. That supports this evil terrorist state of Nigeria. That have planned and colluded with the Islamic jihadist terrorists and the Fulanists. To fight the children of light, the Biafran Christian. That country itself is also a terrorist. Whether it's United States of America. Whether it is Russia. Whether it is Israel, China. Any country that work with this terrorist state is a terrorist. It's time. For countries of the world. Those that believe in humanity. To practice what they preach. If you preach that you are fighting terrorism. For no reason. You should support terrorism. If you condemn terrorism. Why fund terrorists indirectly? Biafran people have been killed in millions. These terrorists have made Biafran land. A place where they harvest organs of Biafrans and ship to China. Another evil country called China. Very evil. When the leader of the free world, United States of America. Wake up to do what is right. By putting Nigeria, S Nigeria. In their rightful place. The C P C, a country of particular concern, a country that kill Christian or evil failed state. Why United States make that bold move? Where is Russia? Russia, Russia, Russia. Why haven't Russia? Speaking? Why is Putin moot? Rather, Russia want to weigh in and see what US is going to do. Know your enemy. Biafran people. Where is China? Have China condemned the killing? In Biafran land? Have China condemned the killing of Christians? But this same useless China. Want to come to your land? Loot everything you have. All your mineral resources, they want to extract it. Without even paying you a dime. You don't even know how they get it out of the country. India. Where is India? All this India, where they are? All these countries are not speaking. My fellow citizens. If you don't know. You have a lot of enemy. You have a lot of enemy. You are trying to escape from colonial rule. Where the Chinese are coming in. With their own language to start all over. Some train in that S country called Nigeria. There are some words that are written in China. How many of you study China at school? They want to force you back. To start to study China. Before you know it, start speaking Chakinchon. Before you know your daughters. Will be married to these people that never met well with you. Before you know your children. They will abandon your mother tongue language. And start speaking unknown language. We are not saying we Biafrans can't do business with them. But we don't want them to come through the back door. Come through the garden front door. If you're a Biafra, you want to travel to China. You have to obtain your visa. You go through. They are immigration, they vet you, they check you properly. But when they come through your land there. They coming freely. They control you. You even work for them. There is nothing wrong by doing business. We live in a global village. People all over the world travel around. They move around. That is nature of humanity or humankind. That is how God designed it. But that don't mean you will leave your own God-given land. To unknown territory. You want to take over their resources? You want to dominate them? You want to treat them as second-class citizens? It's time we Biafrans know our enemy. Where is Qatar? They are not speaking. Where is Saudi Arabia? After the emigration of the S Nigeria. The Eastern Region, we have our own flag. Do you know Saudi, they condemn the flag, they actually burn it inside it. A symbol of that. Who will suppress you. Who will marginalize you. Who will take over your land. Who Islamize you. Saudi Arabia, they don't speak. They will tell you they are more moderate Muslims. And they will use the Islamic jihadist terrorists as their foot soldiers. Doing the dirty work for them. There's nothing like moderate, they all decide. Know your enemy. Align with him who align with you. Love him who love you. We played with United States of America. To hasten up. To do the needful. As the leader of the free world. As the police of the world. When US say let's go. The rest of the world full. For some weeks now. Please the media team, we, you know. We need to do some fine touchings in this. It's very important. We don't want what happened in Afghanistan. Afghanistan. To happen in S Nigeria. We don't want United States of, State of America. To come to Nigeria. In the name that they want to fight the Islamic jihadist terrorists. And in result of that. We don't want them to arm the terrorist army. If they collude and arm the Nigerian military. United States of America should remember. They are arming Boko Haram. They are arming ISIS, ISWAP, Okaidan. Nigerian military, over seventy, eighty percent are terrorists. Real integrate so-called terrorists to Nigerian military apparatus. That is exactly what the country called Nigeria have done. In Afghanistan. After United States of America. Train and equipped. Over two hundred and something personnel, military personnel. Thousand. Not knowing that over ninety percent are the same Taliban. After US withdrew, what happened? The Afghanistan army. Surrendered to the Taliban. Without putting no fight. Till today, it blow the mind of America. Till today, America is still regretting it. Because America left billions of dollars. Billion, not million. Of equipment. And that actually is surge of terrorism you see today. All this equipment, some of this equipment have landed in the hand of Boko Haram. That is a fact. Some have landed in the hand of ISIS. ISWAP. All these terrorists have one common goal. And one major network. They all work together. Their goal is to Islamize the whole world. Their goal is to terrorize everyone. Especially. Where you have mineral resources like in Biafran. Intelligent intel report from United States of America. Just few years ago. Made it clear. That in the year twenty thirty. Nigeria will, S Nigeria will break up. We don't want to wait till twenty thirty before we all die. And this intelligent report made it clear. That these terrorists. They're trying to make Nigeria, S Nigeria, a safe heaven. And when you say S Nigeria. Where the terrorists want to have their base is in Biafran land. So they can lay their hand on these resources. And if that happen. Then we attack the West. And if that happen. United States of America will be also in danger. If that happen. Europe will be in danger. So it's time. Instead of United States of America. To partner. Or to try to work with the Nigerian terrorist military. We have our B D F. They should contact the Biafran Republic Government in Azar. We can work out a deal. Which we already proposed. We can work out a deal and counter this terrorism. Counter this terrorist. It's very important. Because these terrorists, they don't have the same goal with us. They don't have the same ideology. We believe in Western civilization that is built of. Christianity and Judaism. What these terrorist Islamic. Group or religion want to do. Is to set us backward. If we allow them succeed. Instead of us riding in our beautiful cars. Lamborghini, Maserati, Mercedes, name it. We'll go back and be riding on horses. Do you want to go back to? Two thousand? Three thousand years ago? When there is no car. No airplanes. Where people travel with camel, horses. Do you want to go back? To the time of ages? Where there is no technology? And we talk about technology. It's not from the. People that professise about their religion to be the best religion. It's the Christian Judaism. That brought us this civilization. Where I can use my phone and make one, just one dial, one call. Somebody in Biafran land, the same second. We pick up and say hello. Mazi Oge. This is what the Western civilizations have brought us. We are fighting one common enemy. This Islamic group. Whether the moderate from Saudi Arabia, Qatar. Turkey, wherever. All the technology. Things that are making this life so adorable, beautiful today. Did not emanate from there. Rather from the West. Is it, we're talking about China? If the United States of America. Move all their companies from China. China will go down in less than a second. Just few years ago. During the administration of President Biden. The president. Of China. Visited US here. Pleading. With major companies like Elon Musk. He actually have meeting with over four hundred businessmen and women. Pleading, pleading. For United States of America businessmen and women not to pull their company out of China. The West lead. Let it be the way it is for now. You can't fight it. We align ourselves with civilization. We align ourselves with the West. We are not Boko Haram. Boko Haram is against Western education. Boko Haram is against civilization. Boko Haram represents darkness. If you're a Biafra. You live in Western world. You enjoy everything enjoyable. And you don't ask yourself question. How do we get here? You have a problem. And if you don't want Biafran land. To be like or look like where you currently reside. And you be having full electricity. You be having the basic amenities. Especially from the government of where you live. Are you feel comfortable? With all the goodies that come with it? You don't want that in Biafran land. You are worse than Boko Haram. You're evil. That means you don't wish your generation. Your family. Well at all. You don't deserve to live. Or you live in shame. Please, I urge every Biafra. This is a matter of life or death. We deserve to live. Our life is a stick. If you don't want to live. Remember your children. Remember your generation. Remember your lineage. If you don't want to live. Save the life of the innocent women and children. Now that Biafra is trending, what are you doing? What are you bringing to the table? What impact have you made? How are you supporting this great cause? Are you supporting financially? Are you supporting by creating awareness? Can you tell we Biafra, the reason why you decide not to support your freedom? Few days ago, there is this rumor that a former criminal terrorist man, Carlo Biano was dead. Do you know some people celebrated? Some celebrate and say, oh, this evil man finally is gone. The reason why is that he's not pure, he's evil, he don't deserve to live. You as a Biafra, do you want Biafra to celebrate? Do you want Biafra to remember you? Just like the way we remember our leader Ojuku and Philip Effion. There is other that we supposed to remember that also fought during the war. But just because they betrayed, they sabotage our leaders then. Instead of them being in our good book, we have them in our bad book. Somebody like Hope Oza, do you think if anything happened to him today? Who will cry about it or what? Rather would celebrate that an evil man is finally gone. So he can go and rest in pieces. And all these evil people that have colluded with the terrorist, as Nigeria, to kill Biafra's. Even if they died and we have, if they happen that they buried them in Biafra land, when time come, we dig that grave, bring them out, whether it's the bone, remain whatever it is, we will judge them. We'll do whatever we can if there's anything like recon, uh, recognition or what, so they can't even come back again. We'll make them suffer more. We'll have a, we'll have a place for them. Where we bury all these evil people and name it something. We actually have a monument for them, like the one I watched few weeks ago. I don't know whether it's in Japan or wherever, where people go and start slapping them. Evil is not good. If you one of, if you one of those practicing evil or doing evil, disease from it. Darkness can never win light at all. Wherever there is a darkness, once light appear, what happen? The darkness disappear. All those that have been fighting us before our redeclaration, especially after Biafra is redeclared. It's time that you all come back and do what is right. Some of you, it's not your fault. Some of you, you will deceive to believe in the wrong narrative or maybe I'm the bad guy or Maz Yogi Chukwun Kere is evil, he is this, he is that. It's all lie, you've been lied to. You will be welcome if we found out you're not part of this conspiracy of these evil people. We know those that we cannot forgive. And remember, the fight for our freedom, you are not fighting for Maz Yogi Chukwun Kere. You are not fighting for Maz Yogi Simon. You are not fighting for Bishop Comfort. First of all, you are fighting for your own freedom. Charity begins at home. You are fighting for your own freedom. And for those that are doing whatever they can to pull me down, what will it profit you? If you succeed? What will it profit you if you finally bring Maz Yogi Chukwun Kere down? Will you celebrate it? Then after you celebrate it, what next? Then you will do what I'm doing, right? Disease from evil and for those independent medias. All those blogging just to make money. You can make money from any means, especially if you in the media. But speak the truth, report their great news. Stop destroying a man that, do you know how? Karma is real. All you evil people on the social media destroying Brigay, destroying the genuine freedom fighters, destroying the name of all the honorable ministers, destroying my name. Remember karma is real. Everything you lay your hand, you will not prosper. Every nation of this world will walk against you. That is the best I can do for you now. Because I can't bless you with your bad work. You can be blessed, you can be rewarded with good deed when you do what is right. If you practice evil, you will be rewarded with evil. For all of you that are lying against us, from you to everything that come with you or your package sorrow, agony, every nation of it will walk against you. The air you breathe will walk against you. The water you drink will turn to poison. Because these evil people, their own practices, their words have killed hundreds and thousands of Biafres. Their evil deed have misled a lot of innocent Biafres. Some of them, whenever you see them doing this, they are media propaganda with lies. If they don't talk anything evil about Ojuku Nkere is a criminal. It happened to a leader Mazinamdekan. It happened that Mazinamdekan even asked this question. You said Mazinamdekan is this. Mazinamdekan, you said, have he, uh, commit adultery with your wife? Have he stolen from you? Maz Yogi Chukwun Kere, I don't know. Have I collected your money before? What do I do wrong to you? All I do is to fight for what I believe, Biafra. And my fellow citizens, are you are not seeing the result too? Ah, is the result shocking you? The truth always comes. Ngoze Rabenze promised her gollybow once. Since most time, they will all be in Biafra land. I know by November. We are now in November, since most time. I wish, but that's not how I work. Even Mazzy Simon Epa once said, after our redeclaration, we will testify in our liberation and that the Nigerian government will come with everything they have to stop us. And it take years. Liberation is not something that you just close your eyes, open your eyes, you will liberate the entire Biafra land. We have to put up a fight. It take time. It is just a gradual process. And this evil woman went on to say, she have negotiated flight from United States of America with Delta Airline. I hope that contract with Delta Airline is still valid. Our former is still waiting. Former and Diane will stay at the front seat. Because those that will stay at the front seat, they are somewhere, they're going to hit something. So you better know what the seat you choose. Those that will stay at the front seat are the cabinet members. Ngoze Rabenze will stay at the, uh, uh, pocket with the pilot. Actually, she will be the one piloting this one. She must learn how to fly. So, yeah, Rudy first. And Diane will be the co-pilot of Abu. Solomon Unkoshia, you better come back. I heard you running, where you going? Come back here. Onyami, Kerebe no, Onyami na Georgia. When I called this man, Carlo Onyami, trying to educate him a little bit, I said, be careful. Try to talk to this man with good faith. He among one of those I call. I call Onyami, I called the one they call Go Two Four Seven. Who else again I tried to contact? Oh, God, the man. I didn't know, Onyami recorded me and send it to Go Two Four Seven. Go Two Four Seven, we use it and do program. Who go to four seven, where are you now? How about us? These people, they will be at the front of that airline. I will make sure the airline will be the one that will be able to take all of them at once, no going and come back. Because if that airline land in S Nigeria, we already know what will happen. You not come back again. And being so evil, this evil woman said they are negotiating flight from Europe. Is it KLM? Air France. The one in Europe, I don't know if they have finalized it or not. If it is a woman that love Biafra, she will also negotiate flight from Middle East. Because we have some honorables from over there. Those that live in North Korea, South Korea, that means they are not part of those going back home. So they will go in the second or third batch. I remember it. You know, when you speaking the truth, you doing what is right, you can sleep and sleep peacefully, wake up knowing that you owe no one. You will not be paranoid like somebody who commit a crime. You know, if you commit a crime against state and maybe you are under warrant, the government is looking for you. If there is any law enforcement behind you, you will freak out thinking they coming after you. Because you know, you have a question to answer. But if your heart is pure, you are speaking the truth. You are doing what is right, just like our leader Mazinamdekan say. We are white and whiter than smoke, meaning that you have to be pure. I believe and I know I'm pure. And I believe majority of us here are pure. Keep the good work. You will be rewarded with blessing. But for the evil one, they always katar. The evil ones will suspend you, that is not enough. They will, after suspending you, they still have a sleepless night. They say, no, this suspension is not enough. They will say they aspire you, that aspire is still not enough. They can't still sleep at night because their evil is tormenting them. Then they will wake up and turn around with emergency meeting and select a sponge here who have the best point on earth. Let's, that's up here, let's sponge him. Because they are evil. And the question is that what this man, Kamaz Yogi Chukwun Kere, what have I done wrong? They don't have answer for that. I appreciate the admin rep from Eastern Region. Please, all of you from the executive, keep doing the good work. Biafra is here. No matter what happened few days ago, yesterday, those that tried to disrupt this beautiful gathering today. Truth prevail. Where the people prevail. The power that belong to the people, they prevail against the evils that people that they have planted in our midst. They expose themselves every day. They can't hide their enviness, their jealousness. They can't. For the past few months, we have achieved a lot. And those that call themselves freedom fighters that are fighting for Bia, because of Biafra, they can't even tweet or post our achievements with all these beautiful men and women, Congress of the United States of America. They can't even post it because they are so ashamed of themselves. When we went for congressional hearing, they can't even post it. Because they are not fighting for Biafra. They can't even post it, talk about it. We have one of our own recently that have been a strong ally advocating for Biafra. Mr. Gunther. Some of these evil people that have they have, that have disappointed themselves are so angry that Gunther is walking with the light, with the people of light, that Gunther align himself with Biafra Republic government in Azar. And they forget that Gunther is not from, from the zoo. He is from Western world. The way they think is different. And they know how to make their findings, which he did. And he found out the government that is piloting the affair of Biafra people. If you have not aligned with these great men and women that are doing the right thing, kindly do that. Biafra Republic government in Azar still remain the legitimate government. Brigay still remain the tools that will take us to our final destination. Please, we need you. We love you. Be part of this wonderful family. Hurry up so we can all do what is right before it's too late. After United States of America, the leader of the free world pronouns that they are coming to Nigeria, the S Nigeria to deal with this bloodsucking terrorists. You all have seen that the terrorist state of Nigeria and the jihadis, they have been testified. state of Nigeria and the jihadis, they have been testified. It's like the killing just started. Because that is what they are known for. These terrorists believe in what they are doing. That is what their religion taught them. Their religion teaches them that that is the way of their Allah. Their religion taught them that it's a holy war. I don't make, know what make it holy. When they keep killing Biafran Christians, even the Nigerian Christians. Because the middle belt are still Christians, over ninety percent. And we Christians all over the world, we love ourselves. We are all brother in Christ, Jesus. Please, we played with every Biafran. This government that was shut down recently, the United States of America, that was shut down for some time, have reopened. And remember, when the government of America shut down, is the government of the whole world we're talking about. Because the decisions made from Capitol Hill, it affect the whole world. There have been a little bit slow in process of our freedom because of that. But we have meetings, meetings line up. Very soon, on Bokonan News, very soon. Very soon. We will see the result as usual. We have meetings line up. Especially now, that Nigeria is designated as country of evil concern. Every member of Congress one will be on board. They want to register their name to deal with that shithole, disgraced country. You know, when I, when we used to call Nigeria Zoo or shithole country. They don't know that even President Trump even hate them with passion, calling them disgraced. I remember, what a disgraced country. Embarrassed country. Country where a terrorist is the leader. Country that the, that supply arms to terrorists, to terrorize the citizen. What an evil country. Country that cannot accept when they wrong and then made a madman. Shithole country. Before I became the acting Prime Minister, even last year, last two years, I always said it. If I have the opportunity, if I have what it takes, I will burn down the zoo, S Nigeria, I will burn it. I will blow a trumpet. And say, my people, let's get out of S Nigeria. That I'm about to burn S Nigeria down. We all remember what happened in Sudom and Gomorrah. If it's only one person that surviving, so be it. Whoever want to go down in S Nigeria, who burn everything down. Will start all over. Chukoki Kea Biamawa, God in heaven, according to the Holy Book, the Bible, made me to understand that only Noah and his family and the animals there survive the flood. Because of people that don't want to listen. When God ask them to support Noah in building the Noah ark, they refuse. Because of their evil, like shithole, disgraced country called Nigeria. Then whoever believe in Noah survived the flood. And what about Sudom and Gomorrah? Lord and his family likewise. Ah, the same thing we repeat in Nigeria. Any Biafran that decide to be a one Nigeria, that Biafran will go down with the scene of that Nigeria. Only how you will survive is to run away, to escape, to leave the shithole, shameful disgrace country called Nigeria. Nigeria have killed too many innocent soul. Look at what happened in Lucky Toget. The same country called Nigeria. Open fire on innocent civilians. Even these innocent civilians are waving the flag of that dirty, useless country called Nigeria. Not this flag, they are waving that their green and white flag, evil flag. They are still gone down by Nigerian military. I play with every Biafran. Support your freedom with passion, passion, joy. Be happy when you support your freedom. Knowing that your family, your children, your generation will have been brutalized. Yesterday, I receive a message from Power Supply that they will be walking in one of the building. And they told me from what time to what time. Exactly that time, the light went off. And exactly when they said that we turn the light back on, they turn it back on. Something like that cannot happen in that shithole country called Nigeria. You don't even know when they take the light and when they will bring it back. Sometimes they take the light for hours, for days, for weeks, for months, for years. T-shirts will go on strike forever. A whole six months, several months. Sometime, people will work for a whole year without being paid. What a shithole disgrace country. Country without sewer system. Country without no steady electricity. Country without running water. Country without good infrastructure. Country that think. Country where, when our kids graduate, they can't find a job. Tell me, what joy. Those of you that believe in Nigeria, what joy did Nigeria give you? How have Nigeria benefit your life, make you a better person? Peter Obi, a former president candidate and evil man as, are one of those terrorist people. Peter Obisa Nigeria breed criminals. Because he is a criminal as well. I know because of time and our Biafrans, those from homeland, we know what they are going through. Some of them are using their power bank. Some don't have light. You know, I feel so, so sorry that, you know, I'm even feeling guilty that some have tuning for past two, three, four, five hours. Sometime we even wonder, how do they keep up without no light? How do they charge their phone, their gadgets to be in this room with us? Darkness country. This is what they brought to us for over hundred years, and we want to put a stop to it. My fellow citizens from the eastern region of Biafra land, this is exactly what we are fighting for, so we can have a full, steady life, the basic amenities, things that will make us live and live better and want to live. We appreciate the fight that you all have put off from homeland. Please, keep doing the homework. Keep doing evangelism. When I say evangelism, I didn't say go from house to house like Jehovah Witness. You can do it in workplace, in marketplace. You can talk to neighbors, those that know that will not betray, because there's too many saboteurs every week. Talk to your fellow citizens that Biafra is here. Biafra is here. Send message to Tunubu Chatiman, who will destroy them from Washington DC. This is just the beginning. Can you imagine a shithole country called Nigeria? They don't even have ambassador in Washington. For years. They don't even have a lobby. A disgraced country. Thank you, my fellow citizens. I know I've spoken for quite some time now because I don't know why no one is keeping the time for me. I'm sorry if I, you know, if I take too much time. Keep supporting your freedom. Our freedom is here. And for few weeks now, Biafra is trending. And in Europe, we are making things happen. Our allies and those that believe in what we are doing, just like Gunther. You know, there's a lot going on behind the scene. And it will soon manifest, just as usual. We don't, we have passed the time that will come and see what we're not gonna be able to do. And we also want to remind the Nigerian terrorist state, our leader Mazzy Namdekanu did not jump bail. Our leader Mazzy Namdekanu did not commit crime. The Nigerian terrorist state commit crime against Mazzy Namdekanu. If anything hap- Mazzy Namdekanu have been a trap for them. Obasan just said it. What the Nigerian terrorist country state probably thinking the Biafran people not going to be able to do, we are running out of patience. No one have monopoly of violence. No one have monopoly of taking anyone life. Not like Dankote, that fool, that Nigeria gave all the whole major businesses to operate and make him richer than eBay to an order. Nobody have monopoly. All these full army that look like bunga fish, tattered, dirty pigs. They don't look better than us one. They are not more educated than us two. You can't compare life with darkness. Just that's my people need to rise up. If they come with AK-47, you go with AK-10000. If they come with one, you match them with ten. No bochi ndiakiti. Please, if you know, you can support financially, Honorable Minister of Information, please, if you can put the website or anyone there can showcase the website where, go there, support. We have our family members that live in IDP camp that this Nigerian terrorist state have chased out of their home. We are fighting to get these places back and liberate our land. And our families need to come back from IDP camp. It require money to do all that. It require money to liberate our land. It require money to take care of our citizens, our children, family members. Please support. Don't be a full effort. Don't be a fool. Don't starve Nigeria and come back in disgrace. We are not Nigerians, we are Biafrans. We can never be Nigerian. Ayesha Yusuf, that don't used to speak, her video that was trending last week, she made it clear that this union is not working. If we can't renegotiate, let us go back to how we were before. We Biafrans are not asking for renegotiate anything. We want to exit. We don't want to be part of those that don't like us. We don't want to be part of this Islamic jihadist terrorists that are cancer. Anywhere they go, they are so destructive. They destroy everything. They turn everywhere to shithole. We want to be part of this civilized world. We want to be part of those that live and let live, so we can move forward. We don't want to go backward. We don't want to go back to 1,500, 2,000 years backward, where there is no car, where there is no electricity, where there is no airplanes to travel around the globe. We want to move with the civilization of light, not back to darkness. Thank you, my fellow citizens. Please, don't let anyone break your spirit. Everything, let me, how many of us here? Sometime, sometime I myself, I'm just confessing here, don't use this against me. So, I'm human being. Sometime I myself, they try to weigh me down, but it's no work. When you look at the load, things that need to be done, you're like, how do we get here? Yes, don't let no one break your spirit. Hear him. Who can break your spirit and take your life? Which is Jehovah God, Chukwuka Biam, our God in heaven. Don't let no human being, born of a woman, to break your spirit. They try to break our spirit by disrupting our movement, by breaking us into pieces, by disrupting our funding system, by bringing disunity among us. Man, this Namamo will battle, mad people everywhere. Don't make no one break your spirit. I know they are watching me, they are watching. Unagai win. You can't break my spirit. This time around, we must get it right. And we must be free. All of you haters that thought, that think Mazzyo Gekukunkire will not be able to do anything, how far? At the end, when the international bodies come trying to have meeting with us, who did they approach? You all watch my podcast with Gunther, how was it? Why he didn't go to other fake saboteurs? You all watch activity coming from Washington DC. All these saboteurs, what have they proved? What have they show? What have they brought to the table? We have half congressional hearing, of which Marco Rubin was one of attended as well. We have half series of meetings coming from Washington. All these saboteurs that want to break our spirit, how many have there? They should leave us alone. Karma is real. The table we turn, and if they are not careful, when they come to beg for forgiveness, it might be too late. Because we hold all of them accountable. Enough is enough. Support your freedom. Thank you from here. Don't let no one break your spirit. Hashtag, don't let no one break your spirit. Everything they are doing is to break our spirit, to weigh us down. Don't let that happen. Remember years ago, when all of us are there thinking, praying, when we, Washington hear us, am I speaking? Where we, when we, Washington listening to us, but it happened. It's happening. It's happening now before your very own eyes. You are still doubting, Thomas. It's happening now before your very own eyes. And you don't want to move and shift from where you are. You're because of your ego, evil, jealousy. Please, don't do anything you are doing because of me. Do it because of Biafra. When I go to Washington, I don't tell them I'm Biafran. I represent Biafran. If I'm gone now, Biafran still live. If you are gone, Biafran still live. Please, if you hate me, you can hate me. But for the sake of Biafran- But for the sake of Biafra, do what is right. For the sake of Biafra, make sure our BDF get what they want. For the sake of the children, for the sake of the innocent unborn children, our generation, thank you from here, nde wu.
Yes, hi everyone. Yeah, I want to greet the house. Thank you, our APM for your wonderful speech. Thank you, our honorable Minister of Information, Masebaram, and all the members, I greet all of you. Uh, there's nothing else to add to what he has already said. Hello? Hello?
We're hearing you.
Okay, you can hear me, okay, okay. Yes, I just want to support the, I want to support the eastern region with 17,000 Aj. Yeah, well.
Thank you, thank you very much.
One sec, okay, there we go. Thank you, thank you, honorable Akwarawa. Um, that was a wonderful fiery speech. Those who have ear, listen, because we are moving on and I will also contribute on behalf of Aludo, another 100 Ajema for APM's speech. Thank you. That will make it two people.
There were.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. We appreciate. We come to IG, IG Unmeet Yourself.
Good evening, everyone.
There were.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you for catching up. I went to support, I will present a bunch of part-time agent. I'll send to Lagos, Lagos.
Thank you very much.
Over to you, Yannis Hope.
Yeah, our Biafran, nde wu.
There were.
There were.
You see, we are Biafrans. Something happened in this meeting today. I did not realize it. I missed it. The person concerned had to contact me through another person while we are all here. And that is the spirit of Biafra. And I'm saying it so that everybody who have not understood the meaning of being Biafra should try and understand it. Um, you are children of light. You have to reflect light. You have to walk in light. You can't say you are a child of light and you are swimming in darkness. Who are you trying to fool? And this person is from homeland. I did not realize or I was distracted when the individual was talking and made a donation, which I actually did not catch. Maybe that's why I missed it. I did not catch how much the individual donated. But the individual said Naira instead of Aj. Because I did not catch it, I didn't realize it. So if he is a Nigerian, he could have gone and say, well, it's my luck. But because he said a Biafran, he reported himself and he asked what would be his penalty? Whether he's going to be warned for doing it or penalized for doing it? Now, I chose to pay the penalty because if I wasn't distracted, I could have caught the mistake. So I will not let it go and I thank this our brother. This is what our leaders say. We are Biafrans. We are whiter than white. We are whiter than snow. If you see stop sign, the sign says stop. You don't have to run it because there's no police. If you stop only when you see police, that's high service and you're a hypocrite. If you understand the meaning, stop. Stop. And that's when you are a civilized person. So my brother, and maybe I need to tell the world who this nice Biafran is. Is our own brother Success. Thank you so much for being a good citizen. So I am going to absorb that penalty. Uh, how much am I going to pay for it? Let me see. I wrote it down, oh, for goodness sake, where did I write it?
Honorable love.
Yes.
You can be the judge and be, uh, uh, Minister, are you here?
Okay, question, question. Onyisi, you want him to pay the penalty?
You know how you work now, you will be the one to find him. But instead of you, now since you are representing him, Minister, we will find you. Uh, am I, am I right, Minister of Information? Love you, sir. Honorable love. You not represent Success, so you can't find yourself.
But I'm not finding myself. I am paying the fee on behalf of Success.
Hey, wait for me, sir.
But remember, but all of you should remember. You see this little half inch lady? I always remember things. Okay, so, Mki, you've been called to be the judge. Go ahead, pass your judgment.
Please, don't take it on anyone before they give you, if you start giving high five.
No, you said I can't be, I can't decide the penalty by myself. So now Mki should be the judge.
Yeah, eh, Cherry.
Let her decide.
Cherry, Cherry, you know why you can't be the one to decide the penalty? You're the one that brought the case to open to the courts. Mm-hmm. So you shouldn't be the one to say, give the finance. So Cherry, make another assistant judge. Come and give the finance so that you will now take the floor. To now appeal, you can now appeal.
No, I will not appeal anything.
Uh-huh, so wait, make a, Assistant Judge, are you there? Madame K, if you're not there, we will call another judge, you know.
Mki cannot be off duty. Who told her to be off duty?
You don't know whether she entered.
Mki is hiding. She better come out now, that is daybreak.
Okay.
Before she, before she get charged, we issue a bench warrant to go get her. Uh-huh, so she better be out here now. Mki, where are you?
Wait, if Mki is not there, we, we have many chief judges here in this house.
Mki left her post, then she will be fined for leaving her post unauthorized.
Yeah, when she come, when she comes, she will get a fine. Um, Honorable, are you there? Eh, Honorable Abigail, are you there, Unmeet Yourself? We have many chief judges in this house.
Hello?
Honorable Noye, are you there? Honorable, Abigail, are you there?
Abigail locked the, locked the door, where is she? There, there was.
I just got in, special greetings to the people of God.
There were, there were.
Quick, and then he's greeting.
There were, between, between the two of you, which of the judge want to take the stage? Between a judge, Josiah and Judge Noye, who want to take the stage?
I will, I can, I can take the stage.
What's the case about? We are going to judge.
Wait, Noye has already. Noye?
My heart, yes. Not only teaching warnings. Okay, so, uh, Aloka, my honorable love, since you missed, since you missed the mispronouncement of honorable Success and you decide to pay on his behalf, I will say, I will say you have to give us 10, 10 Ajema.
Okay.
10 Ajema.
Okay, okay. I will not appeal anything. That's final verdict.
It's final, yeah.
Yes, that's the final verdict.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Now, you see, my people, you know what we are doing? What we are doing is that we are training the people in government so they can train the citizens. That's what we are doing. Uh-huh. So don't look at it as a useless exercise. We are resetting the brains of Biafrans.
Yes.
You can never, never, never take Nigeria into Biafra. No, if we are going to do that, we better remain in Nigeria. There must be a clean, clear cut difference between the two. So that's the whole thing. And I thank Minister Success for reporting himself. Okay, I yield, let's go.
For your good work and duty. We come to Irohibom. Irohibom, Yannis Hope, go ahead.
I, Irohibom State Administrator. I welcome our APM, or his founder for this, to welcome the eastern region, to be a part of encouragement to us. So we are very happy, yeah, Irohibom State. So we, Irohibom State, we have donated our donation by county, about 40 county donated the donation. I want to call now. In the county, that 23,000 Aj, Ndiya, Ikono, 20,000 Aj, Ibiono Ibo, 26,000 Aj, E2, E2, Oma, 20,000 Aj, Ujo County, 20,000 Aj, County, that 30,000 Aj, Insert Ibo. 10,000 Aj, Ibo Zipo Asutan, 20,000 Aj, Etinan, County, 30,000 Aj, Oku Ikono Ibo, 42,000 Aj, Insert Ibo, 10,000 Aj, Ide Ibiono Ibo, Ide Ibiono, 30,000 Aj, Itam, County, 30,000 Aj, Insert Ibo, 10,000 Aj, in total, Ikono, 300,000 Aj, Irohibom donated. Thank you, Mr. APM. Thank you, my Minister of Information and Communications. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much, thank you. Thank you, thank you very much, there were.
All right, because of my limited time, so I will not waste much of our time. I'm going to support extra 20 Ajema because of our speech from our active prime minister and, you know, just to encourage each and every one of us. Thank you very much, APM. Thank you very much, Infomisamisa. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, my honorable Sonia Parawa. And thank you, the media team, my APM. You are always so wonderful. Um, I thank you, the eastern region, for welcoming our APM and to support you on this. Um, I know it's very late for you over there, so I'll be quick. Um, I will support you with welcoming our APM, our honorable indomitable APM with 100 Ajema. Thank you.
There were, thank you, thank you.
There were.
Hello? Hello, hello. Hello, good evening, yeah.
It's dawn.
I'm supporting my beloved, active prime minister. Thank you again. I'm gonna, I'm supporting him with this speech for thank you again. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Shere, honorable Sonia, you have some information. Thank you for this good job that you are doing. And, um, we have make it to come to reality despite history of this journey of freedom. And we are making it to come to reality. And, uh, we have been getting message, uh, as we are in this town hall meeting. Uh, some of these criminals that are looking for position over there is crying. How we are structuring and how we are moving forward. And they are asking how I wish they have somebody like you and I in their system. But I believe that they will not have it because with God, all things are possible. And I want to encourage everyone to remain focused, but looking for the ball. And don't allow the spirit of receiver to enter into you. Keep on looking forward and also every day in your life, eh, you should be asking yourself question. Why are you in this struggle? The purpose of you being in this struggle? Do you see this struggle as a career agitation in this state that every year you and I will be coming here to the same town meeting? We are tired of this, and that is the reason why many of us are trying our best to bring out all the mechanism that will make us to come, make this dream to come to reality. And we know that, um, the kingdom of darkness are trying hard. But I know that when light appear, darkness disappear. I want to thank everyone for this today town hall meeting. We are expecting to host, uh, also the Cent- uh, the Central Region, sorry, Northern Region. We should hold their own, and we are also looking forward for West and South. And it's a thanks that every one of us, it's a collective thanks that every one of us will join hand together to do it. And we must continue on doing all what we can and what we know how to do. We sincerely thank our APM for how he is highlighting the affair of this movement. I encourage him to keep it up, the homeland is behind him. All these noise makers that you are seeing, all those people that are making noise over there. They are making noise over there because the increment of the system or what is inside the system, they don't have it. And that is why you see that they are making that noise. And many of them who join partner with this madam, they, when they are thinking that following madam will give them the source of information. And unfortunately, Almighty God disappear or disappoint them. Today is a wonderful day for us. You guys have seen how that we put this, but we still encouraging our brothers and sisters who is outside also to make sure that if we are still not performing well, you know that, uh, you over there, I know that you have asset to some of the peoples in your village. We are not saying that you should, uh, start doing other sport at least. It's a part of evangelism, and, uh, there is a grassroots work that is going on now as I'm talking to you. A serious grassroots is going on in all the forty states, and we are getting a good response. To be a part of this great movement, you will not regret it. And they always said, if you want to achieve a greatness, try to know how to guide your speech or guide your mouth or guide your secret. And that is what the pastor is doing now. Thank you, those that going back in their bed, God, Almighty God will bless you. Thank you so much from here.
Thank you very much, thank you. I just wanna appreciate every Biafra here today and those you do, and wherever you're washing for, we appreciate you. If you know what you do on the Zoom, uh, we appreciate everybody. Joining, and please kindly, don't forget, the website is twenty-four seven, Biafra Republic Government dot O R G. And B, B R O G I E restoration, Jean Hope dot O R G, please kindly visit, support your freedom of people, support your your media, support those that are setting the land of Biafra from this Islamic terrorist. And it's not just that we are not making it up, it's all over the world. All these Islamic terrorists, they are ravaging every country, even in Europe. Some of these countries are fighting for their survival, trying to deal with them. So now they understand and see what we are going through. It's real, it is real, if you think these people, they love you, they like you, they mean to dwell with you or live with you, it's a lie. Their goal is to Islamize you, chase you out of your land. And even if they, if that don't happen to impose the Sharia law on you, law that you have nothing to do with. Law that is not of your culture, your system, your religion. So it's replaced, it's not just, uh, it's more than threats. These people, they have come, and they are in our land, where our leader was in Ndekanu years ago, was saying, they are coming, they are coming. Something is a joke, everywhere. One, two, any news come from that S night, we are sabah terrorists, in Quara, do this in Altina, in Benue, in Biafra land is already neutralized. And we are just fighting more, we chase the same terrorists in uni- military unit from out of our land. It is real, if you have hunger, do you mean that you are exempt? Who wants to die? You know, any Biafra that, uh, that they kill or honor alive is our, oh, it's our family member. So please, let's do and hurry up to protect our land with our children, our mother, our family members. Biafra is here, together we can all fight this fight and beat this war. Before this subutua, please, this is from your evil. Evil will never pay you good, rather evil, you will be rewarded with if you practice this good, you will be rewarded with good. Please, good will always win, light will always win. Please join the children of light and do what is right, so that you will be in Biafra good book, and you will be remembered and celebrated. And you yourself will have bits of mind, knowing that you do the right thing by fighting for our freedom. Thank you all, the executives from the Eastern States. We appreciate you all, please, and just keep doing the good work. We will rise, what your state to make, make sure that we chase the enemy out of our land, thank you, there.
I have an update. Okay, uh, I don't know what, what is it? Is making a donation of thirty thousand AJ, also a company, two thousand AJ. That's it, thank you.
Hello, good evening, Akparawa. Hello, my APM, there was some. I'm sorry, um, Sundays are usually, um, very tight around this time for me. But I had to, you know, run, run out from where I was to raise my hand before you close. Thank you, thank you so much for giving me this time. I want to appreciate everyone that made this happen today. Um, uh, Eastern Region of Biafra, we are proud of you all, God bless you. Um, COA and every admin, I want to say God bless you. And, um, APM, that speech was, it was, I don't know how to, um, describe it. God bless you, sir. Those who have here, they should hear what the priest is saying to the church. And, um, to those who are still on the fence, I pity you. It's better you start funding your liberation now, that there is still time. Have your name written in the book of Biafra. Thank you, Akparawa, for standing strong and for keeping this house, uh, rolling. And shame to all the saboteurs. And if you are still yourself, trying to lie to people, just to dissuade them from what we're doing, God will punish you. Our APM said, everything will walk against you. Nature will walk against you. The water you, you drink will be a curse to you, the food you eat will be sickness to you. Unrepentant, and turn a new leaf, stop lying to people. Stop lying to people. You are stupid idiots, hosty, stupid spaces, lying to people, calling our APM names, calling him thief, uh, A T and all that. God will punish you all. You question that, oh, Nulok, come. And I don't have a kubutu, Nulay, stop your lies. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm taking time, it hurts when you see people that should know the right thing to do, they are doing foolishness. Um, thank you, um, to my able, Madi Success, the chief of defense, God bless you, your speech was the wonderful one. And I want to thank you for stand so strong beside our APM and Information Minister, may God bless you. You are one in a million, Madi Success, God bless you, sir. Um, yeah, I just want to say thank you all, and I drop my mic here with fifty thousand AJ, God bless you, everyone. Aloka, God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Minister, Minister Yunis. So for coming late, I don't know what, uh, what, uh, our officer will say about that, offer. For, um, it's coming late, and I find.
I will, I will, APM, more people.
Well, um, we have not, we've not made any, enacted any law for delay commerce, but they need to know. They need to know that we are not stopping. You see how we enacted another law yesterday, unannounced, that's the way we are going to do that. So if you are coming late and forming a habit and thinking you are the good person, we see you and you will be punished. Inducision.
Okay, Aloka.
We have not enacted any law to that effect, Yunis, you will go in peace today, but sin no more.
Amen, Aloka, I, I want to, I want you to start this new law. Uh, let you start with me, thank you for honoring me, but I want to start it.
We have not enacted it now, that's the reason, yeah, that's what I'm saying. But you did well to, to lower your hand because that law was enacted yesterday.
Okay, eh, eh, please, oh, I want to.
We are trying to get our people together.
I want to add, uh, a little bit, uh, a little bit, uh, um, ajem, aj to the one I, I already.
Alright, you can do that.
Yes, I want to, to those, all of those fools that are always online with their ten and twelve listeners. After twelve hours, they have only fifteen people still listening. I want to say, may God punish them, may Amadyo Ha punish them with ten thousand AJ. If all of them, university in them more, God will punish all of you.
Alright, I hope you submit your list to Amadyo Ha.
I have all, alright. Alright, thank you.
Please, honorable Sonia, as we are, uh, putting up.
Please, honorable Sonia, as we are wrapping up. There's a video or audio you played, was it yesterday, about Onyendu, talking about the regions of Biafra. We will appreciate a copy of it so that we use it or we'll be using it to educate Biafrans. Especially those ones who are, uh, whose head are strong. Who sees the light and follow darkness. We'll be using it to educate them about the regional creation of Biafra. So we will copy of it. And circulation. Or can even start appreciating it here if you can play it once before the meeting ends. I said, there's an audio of Onyendu. MS, M N K, you played in yesterday's, uh, general fundraising about the regions of Biafra. So we will need a copy of it so that we can be using it to educate, uh, Biafrans. Those stubborn ones who antagonizes what we are doing about the regions of Biafra. We will appreciate. I think I put it for the meeting. Okay. Okay. Okay, there.
Thank you very much. Please, uh, yeah, before that, please start your, your, just one second. I just wanna let every Biafran. What we are doing speaks for itself. Anyone who claim to, you know, tell you they are fighting for Biafran freedom, they are doing this, doing that. We want result. Let them show us what they have achieved for the past week, two weeks, a month, two, three. If whoever can't, if they can't, that is the result there. So. That, that, you know, shame, shame unto them, shame unto those that are, that think that they can break our spirit or stop what we are doing. We just started do. We just started. The fire is burning, burning more than used to. And we are getting more tougher, more harder every day. So the evil ones that are working against our freedom, I don't know how they sleep. Please, for the true, genuine freedom fighters here, all the members of the cabinet, I, I appreciate all of you here, rep and admire everybody. Please visit our website. Support your B D F, support your freedom. No one else will do it worse. In few days, weeks, we will get more news coming from where it's happening. Not, it all happened in Switzerland. It happened here, United States of America. It happened from Washington DC, the capital of the world. The shutdown is over. The government have reopened. So Nigerian government terrorist state, they will be ready. Why you are doing the misful, what is supposed to do, we. Brigade will be doing what we be doing for most. But the Nigerian terrorist state, they are crying, they are talking a break, they have not started yet. Nigeria have collapsed. Thank you very much and.